The April 26, 2016 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. By the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm impressing everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic device or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, time will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system, other school board only. Presentation to the boards are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters in which this board customarily take action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete the lime green form. This form must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Ms. Velvia Brown, Career Education Facilitator, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Velvia Brown. I am one of your Career Education Facilitators with the Career and Technical Education Department of Marion County Public Schools. Thank you for having us out on this afternoon. We have two students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then deliver the inspiration. Kalid Taylor is of Liberty Middle School. She placed fourth in our State Leadership Conference in Middle Level Procedures and Principles. She will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Jessica McCurdy of Vanguard High School, who is our District 7 President-elect. Jessica will deliver the inspiration.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Hello. Stepping to the staccato of synchronized heartbeats, we breathe in, walk through the door, shake hands, and present. We prepared for months, researching and editing, editing and practicing, and finally, it's reality. We're here at State. An amazing opportunity, learning and networking, all following the FBLA creed. We believe in education, responsibility, and understanding, no matter race, color, sex, or handicap. We all promise to use our abilities to make a difference. We are all preparing to succeed for when we leave textbooks and homework, retire our backpacks for briefcases, and enter a world unlike the one we have become so accustomed to, into a world of businesses and salaries. But we will be ready because we are future business leaders. We know what to expect in that brave new world. Our briefcases will be packed with experience. We have grown and developed, played our strengths and strengthened our weaknesses. Striding to the legado of confident tranquility, we breathe in. We walk towards our futures, prepared. Joining FBLA has been one of the most beneficial, eye-opening, and enjoyable experiences of my life. Through FBLA, I feel that I have a better grasp on the business world, improved leadership skills, and the experience that I need to transition from school to a career. FBLA focuses on service, education, and progress. These three competencies are vital to FBLA. Service produces students who give back to the community and do what is right. Education gives students the tools they need to succeed, and progress is what we see in every single FBLA member. FBLA has something for every student. With over 55 competitive events, it's easy to find something that matches your interests and challenges you. For me, this has been public speaking and business ethics. In just these two competitions, I have learned so much about my strengths and my weaknesses. Through public speaking, I was able to mature in my style and develop new rhetoric techniques. For business ethics, I was able to work with a group, researching and presenting on important ethical issues. In both competitions, I was able to make it to state finals, which was an amazing opportunity. The amount of knowledge and dedication present at state competition is unlike anything I've seen before. It's a celebration of competition, learning, and success. This is an amazing organization that has given me, as well as thousands of other students, the opportunity to grow into a strong, passionate citizen, ready to make a difference in our world. I am a future business leader of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You stepped out before I could say something to you. Ms. Brown, I know you have worked, you also work with middle schools. Tell us a little bit about how you connect the middle school with what you do. I was out at CTAE, I think it was last year, when I sat in on one of your programs, and you had the Middle School Horizon, and you also had some schools from outside of the county. Tell us a little bit about that.
Yes, sir. That is correct. District 7 is comprised of Marion, Citrus, and Levy Counties. Within FBLA, we have both the middle level, which is grade 6 through 8, and then the high school level. So the middle school students have the opportunity to compete at state level, which trains them to compete at the state level once they get to the high school, and then they can move on to national levels if they desire.
How many kids did you have involved in that program?
Currently, this year, we had around 173 approximately for District 7, and we had over 4,000 participants at our State Leadership Conference last month.
Guys, board, if you have not seen that program and had an opportunity to go out and watch this young lady work with kids, you're missing really a treat on what we do. Thank you again for the job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent.
Board, with the exception of Item C-11, C-13, and C-35, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for their April 26, 2016 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included is part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
No move. Second.
No move by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. King. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 17, 2016 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
So by move by Ms. Ely.
Second.
And second by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Saying none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed, 5-0. Ms. Judy Sinetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, would like to recognize a new business partner for the North Marion High School.
Good evening Superintendent Thomas, Chairman James, and the rest of the board members. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here again this evening, and I hope that when I come and I bring these presentations to you, that it is a reminder that great things are happening in our schools every single day, and that we have community members that are involved and share with us their time, their talent, and their treasures every single day. I am pleased right now to introduce the Principal of North Marion High School, Mr. Ben Whitehouse. And with him from Cullison Wright Construction, we have Sarah Cullison and Barry Mansfield. And Cullison Wright is a new business partner with North Marion High School, and they are excited and proud to be joining North Marion in this venture. So I'm going to allow Mr. Whitehouse to say something. Mr. Whitehouse?
Thank you. I just wanted to say how much we appreciate the support of Cullison Wright and joining forth to our school, and we know that every partnership that we gain with the community makes our school stronger, and so we're grateful and we're looking forward to a great future together with them.
Barry?
Well, we appreciate it, and actually, it's an honor for us to be able to participate. You know, I was raised in Ocala, went to Forest High School, my kids all went through here, so we always, you know, it was taught, my mother-in-law actually was a teacher for 39 years at Ward Highlands. So we were taught, you support the school system. So anyhow, we appreciate it. We value this partnership, and thank you so much.
Okay, now for the little presentation. Hold on, we're going to clap in a minute, Mr. Thomas. Okay, so to hang in your school office, just to acknowledge our partnership, thank you all very much.
Barry, I just want to say this to you. I remember you in your youth.
Thanks.
So, thanks again for supporting us, and I know that you will continue what you have always done. You've always helped us at Marion County. You're giving back to the system that you came from. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kathy Quellin, Executive Director of School Development and Valuation, who served as the District United Way Liaison, would like to share the results of this year's campaign.
Mr. James, Mr. Tomlin, members of the board, it is with extreme pleasure that I stand here before you this evening, because we're going to do something that's very unusual here with the board. Usually, at the end of the meeting, we thank our community for giving to us. Well, tonight, we're going to give to our community. For as long as I can remember, and I've been with Marion County Public Schools for 31 years, we have always had a United Way campaign that supports the United Way in partnership with the Marion County Public Schools, and this year is no different. So I'd like to bring some folks in, or actually, they're here. Scott Quintel is the Executive Director of the United Way. We have Natalie McCombs, who is the Campaign Director, and we have Mr. Brad Rogers, who served as the Marion County Chair for this last year with the United Way. The thing that makes this so exciting for me is that the United Way serves our kids. When there are kids at the Salvation Army, because they have no place to go, it's our kids. They go to the Boys and Girls Clubs, those are our kids. I could go on and on and on, and know Mrs. Ely is involved with Reading Pals, but all of these dollars that are raised stay here in Marion County. And I don't want to steal Scott's thunder, but I think you can tell how excited I am to be part of this project. So what I'd like to do is, I would like, on behalf of the Marion County Public Schools, I would like to present this check to the United Way of Marion County for $257,885.24. I believe Mr. Quintel has a couple of words, followed by Mr. Rogers.
Well, on behalf of the number of people in this community that will benefit from the school district's generosity, your employees' generosity, thank you very much. It was exciting to see the enthusiasm within the school buildings this year as your staff considered the impact that their gifts would have to United Way, and I believe we have a short video that we shared with them this year.
Brad, turn to that, lights down a little bit.
While he is bringing that up, I will share with you, we have a sheet, and Natalie from our staff is going to share one of these with each of you. The contributions from school district employees this last year provided services to 20,506 individuals here in Marion County. So that is truly fantastic. When you look at the number of folks that received services, kids in the community that were helped with early childhood literacy, their success rate in schools, your staff really should be commended for their generosity and commitment to Marion County as a whole.
So have you ever given to United Way?
No, they've asked me about it here at work, and I've heard of United Way, but there's not much I can give from my paycheck. We are still digging out of debt since Jim's been out of work for a while.
You'd be surprised what even $1 from your paycheck could do. It all adds up because the way that United Way does it is the most effective way, and our company lets you do a payroll deduction, so that makes it even easier. I feel like even my small gift makes a big difference in the community, kind of like it's multiplied when it's added to all the others. Why don't you give it a try when they ask this year?
Hello?
Hi, ma'am. Thank you for your donation to United Way. Reading was a real struggle for me, but with your help and Marion County Literacy Council, I was able to get the help I need.
Oh, you're most welcome, young man. Can I help you?
Good morning. I wanted to thank you for your gift to United Way. Because of your gift, I was able to get a hot meal and a warm place to stay at the Salvation Army, and they helped me get back on my feet.
Oh, you're very welcome, ma'am. Hold on. Excuse me, ma'am. I just wanted to let you know, because of your donation to the United Way, I was able to get myself and my children out of a domestic violence situation. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I did all of that?
With one investment, big or small, the power of your donation goes a long way to make a big difference right here in Marion County. Donate to United Way today and see what the power of one can do.
So again, thank you on behalf of the 20,506 individuals that were helped in Marion County with the generosity of your team. Also have the opportunity to introduce to you someone you already know, Brad Rogers. He was our Campaign Chair this last year, and I really want to give Brad credit. This year, we had a 2.5% increase in the campaign. It was the first time in the last seven years that United Way has accomplished that, and it was under Brad's leadership that we were able to get that done.
Mr. James, board members, thank you for having us here tonight. We want to, this is really a celebration, and, you know, I'm married to a school teacher, and I ask her, she gives every year, and she always talks about how important it is to give, because the teachers see every day what the United Way agencies do. They see what our net house does, they see what Kimberly Center does, they see what Interfaith does, the Boys and Girls Club, and on and on. As they said earlier, the school employees gave $258,000 to United Way this year. But if I give you, I've been coming to this board for how many years, George? 20 years? I know you like numbers. The increase this year in giving by school board employees was 15%, roughly $32,000. That basically was the increase in our overall campaign giving this year, the school board employees. We had 500 new donors from the school system. The participation rate increased from 38% to 45%, and I don't want to leave these out. You provided eight, someone wrote my notes here, incredible superstar loaned executive volunteers, and they were absolutely vital. And Mr. Tomlin, organization is a reflection of its leadership. He has been so supportive of United Way, and it reflects in what the employees have given. I'm going to give you one more set of numbers just to give you an idea of how generous your employees are. In the state of Florida, Marion County Public Schools was the third highest money-raising school system in the state behind Miami Dade and Brevard. You all should be very proud. You all know what these agencies do and what they mean to these kids and these families, and we are extremely grateful to the employees of Marion County School System. Thank you very much.
Another question.
Okay, Brad?
Mr. Rogers, I have a question. Scott, that video was great. When school starts next fall, do the principals or does the district put the video or something together to sell our employees on the need for giving to United Way?
You actually, as a district, do a couple of things. Number one, Kathy Quellin and her leadership of the school district campaign is fantastic. I know that the efforts around United Way are one of the things you look at in developing some of your staff, so kind of project management skills. We also look for the opportunity to share this message with as many people as possible in the district, and I think that's one of the things we were able to do this year, was to have the opportunity to directly share, you know, the numbers and what the impact is and the number of people that are served with employees within the district. And as Brad shared the numbers, you can see it made a tremendous impact.
Well, the video was great. Thank you so much for working so hard, Brad, and Scott. Appreciate it.
One thing I'd like to just share with you, asking for money is not an easy task.
Nope.
And I just want to say, Brad, on behalf of all of us in the county, thank you guys because y'all did a really tremendous job of asking for money. Thank you. Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation recognized on May 3, 2016 as National Teacher Appreciation Day? May I have a motion and a second?
No move.
Second?
Move by Ms. King, second by Ms. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. John Curley, Vanguard High School Principal, and Ms. Tina Chavicio, Marion County Teacher of the Year, and as well as Mr. Chris Altabello, Marion County President of the Marion County Education Association, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
You want to read it?
Sure, I'll read it. Nobody wants to read it. I'll read it.
The proclamation for National Teacher Appreciation Day. Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Marion County School Board and Superintendent, serving as the policy and decision-makers for Marion County students, do hereby proclaim May 3, 2016 as National Teacher Appreciation Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, you got to come to the podium.
Chairman James, board members, Mr. Superintendent, we have something for you. Congratulations to Tanya, who will be displaying this proudly at Vanguard High School. I come to you tonight on behalf of the association, and I wanted to share with you Teacher Appreciation Week and why teachers deserve our praise and support. Unlike other careers in which the same method can be applied time and time again, teaching requires an individualized approach, as each student learns differently and has a different set of circumstances that they bring every day. I want to give you some facts about U.S. teachers. On average, teachers work more than 52 hours a week, including 30 hours for instruction alone, and 22 hours on average on tasks like preparing lessons and grading papers. At the same time, teachers work with more, on average, more than 20 students in a class, and we know that can be higher in certain grade levels, and work with new students each school year. Every day in schools across the country, teachers touch the lives of millions of children, and their work and impact extends far beyond the boundaries of the classroom. So how can we appreciate teachers? Let's talk about this. When families are engaged and partners with teachers, amazing things can happen. When students attend school more regularly, earn better grades, enroll in higher-level programs, have higher graduation rates, and are more likely to enroll in post-secondary education, all when our families are engaged. One prominent study found that students are 10 times more likely to improve in math and four times more likely to improve in reading than students who attend schools without effective family engagement. And here's one that should involve all of us here. The Journal of Human Resources states that family engagement can raise student academic achievement so significantly that schools would need to spend an additional $1,000 per pupil to receive the same academic results. So parents, get involved with your child's education, and I'm sure teachers will appreciate that. Before I turn it over to Tanya, I want to just mention something. I recently got the retirement list from Marion County, and I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the many teachers who are retiring this school year. Looking at that current list, we are scheduled to lose well over 1,000 years of teaching experience. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week and their retirement, I would like to read this poem, author unknown. "Your retirement has made everyone value you ever more. It has made us appreciate the way you have strengthened our cores. You are not just retiring from your post position or role, you're retiring as a teacher who inspired our souls." So thank you for everything you do, teachers, on behalf of the MEA, and then I'll turn it over to our Teacher of the Year.
Hello, thank you. Thanks for inviting me back. I enjoy coming every time, Mr. Tomlin, Mr. James, and the rest of the board members. It is an honor, definitely, being Teacher of the Year in Marion County, and I hope I represent not only Vanguard High School, but also Marion County very well. As far as national teacher appreciation, it means a lot to us as teachers to be appreciated. Usually, we take a week out of the year, and we get gifts, luncheons, breakfasts, from usually members in the community, parents, and clubs around school, and that does mean a lot to us. I just wanted everyone to know that. So we do appreciate everything you guys do for us, so thank you.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes, I would like to say I have three students that wouldn't be what they are today had it not been for their 13 years in the Marion County School System. I'm proud of them. This school system did them well. Thank you.
I wanted to make a statement. I know your school might do something every day for teachers. Not every school is as lucky to have the parent support in that group, so I would like the parents to know that we need to support our teachers, whatever school your children go to, and you don't need to buy them gifts. Thank you notes are great, parent support is great, even an apple in the teacher's mailbox is terrific, but anything you can do to let your teachers know how much you support them.
I'd just like to share this with the principal and the number-one teacher, your number-one teacher. It's always a pleasure to have you come before the board, and I know when you're at your school, you all reflect, your students, and your students reflect you all. So again, I would like to congratulate you on being Teacher of the Year, and I want to thank all the people at Vanguard for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. I will now ask the Board Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. James. Good evening, everyone. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, Section 286.0114 of the Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to school district operations. The School Board has adopted these procedures to ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to speak and be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table near the door to this room. Please fill out completely a public speaker form located on the table adjacent to that boardroom door. Those forms were due to the School Board's Assistant no later than 5:40 PM. Speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting and the order of receipt of forms by the School Board's Assistant. Based on time consideration, the School Board by majority vote may decide to limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, which I understand the board chairs and cl-. the board chairs and claim to do tonight, move public comment time to a different position on tonight's agenda, or eliminate the public comment time for this meeting altogether, and reschedule it for a future meeting. Before you begin speaking tonight, please state your full name and address for the record, spell your last name. I understand that each speaker, Mr. Chair, will be allowed two minutes of time. Is that right? When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner, therefore verbal attacks and profanity are prohibited. Also, unsolicited, commercial solicitations are prohibited. The school board may, of course, on its own initiative, request informational presentations on matters involving the Marion County school system. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. Speakers may use handouts or audiovisual presentations, but only if they were provided to the board assistant at least 48 hours prior to the meeting, and have a total length of five minutes or less. Only a student's parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to these requirements tonight, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my explanatory remarks.
Okay, board, do I have a consensus for the two minutes for our speakers? Do I have a consensus on that? Let me just share this with you, with the people that will be speaking and the people that will be listening. My commitment has always been to young people, and when you are speaking tonight, I would like for you to understand that we are, we have two sides to the issues that will be heard tonight. I would refer to you, if you agree with the person that's speaking, to give him a thumbs up, but please don't applaud, simply because we have people here and we do not want to hurt young people. It's okay to say, "Hey, John," but don't say, "Hey," but give him a thumbs up to let him know that you agree with him. This will, this will in turn keep us moving along, and we will keep this to the, to a point where we can, it will be manageable. Make sure that we do not have a pep rally, but we are here for substance. Madam Secretary.
Leah Centeno. Leah Centeno. Okay. C-E-N-T-E-N-O, if I'm not pronouncing it correctly. I wasn't expecting to be first, I wasn't even expecting to be called, but I thank all of you, I'm going to leave my paper there. I just want to thank all of you, first of all, for just even being here, for wanting to be educators of our children.
Before you begin, would you state your name and
Oh, yes. Yes. My name is Leah Centeno, and my address is 5880 Northwest 131st Avenue, Morriston, Florida, 32668. Yes, again, thank you, thank you for your time. I want to commend you for wanting to be educators. And I thank you, I thank you for this opportunity to speak for you. Mr. Bobby James, I want to thank you personally, especially, because when I was in high school, you were my principal, and I remember a big change when you came, because you would always, even though I don't remember the words, you would always end your announcements with something more or less as a call to excellence, and I appreciate your dedication, I really, and I think all the students knew that you cared. You know, we're all here for our children. I think we can agree with that, you know? We all united over the United, the charity video, forgive me, I'm nervous. United, what is it, the United, anybody help me? Yes, United Way, yes. I mean, people should not be abused, people should not be hurt, okay? So I just want it to be known that nobody here, I believe, I believe at the end of the day, as Americans, nobody wants to hurt anybody, and I do, I, you know, see my sticker? I stand with God, and you know what? I'm laying everything down, I'm just going to say that, that doesn't mean that I discriminate anybody. God is love, and I think we're all here for love. I love everybody, I don't, I don't look at somebody as, as, I don't, I don't come up here and say, "Hi, I'm Leah, and I'm a heterosexual." You know, that doesn't matter. God is love, and out of love, I commend you for maintaining the bathroom situation as it is, because, because I know people that have been molested in bathrooms, plain and simple, how about that? I know people that have been, that have been hurt over this, so
Thank you.
So I thank you, thank you for, I pray that you keep it that way.
Thank you.
Roxanne Manzone. Roxanne Manzone. Okay. Just so that we can have the next person ready, would be Carlos Smith.
Roxanne Manzoni, 1910 Southwest 29th Terrace, Ocala, Florida, 34474. Superintendent Tomlin, Chairman James, board members, and my fellow Ocala Marion County residents. My name is Roxanne Manzoni, I'm a 40-year resident of the Ocala area. I work for a fantastic employer, I own my own home, I pay taxes, and I am a volunteer in my community, and yes, I am transgender. I commend Superintendent Tomlin and Chairman James for their attempts to work out a responsible policy regarding our transgender students. Thank you. I remind the other board members that your first responsibility is to provide for the safety and welfare of all our students. You, the board, will fail to protect the safety of our transgender students by forcing them into bathrooms that do not match their gender appearance, and they will be subject to harassment, most certainly bullying, and possible physical violence. You are sending a loud and clear message to our transgender students. You're not accepted in our schools, and we don't care about your safety. It is also painfully obvious that you, the Marion County School Board, has caved in the pressure from the religious extremists and uninformed parents to craft such a hateful, discriminatory policy which you are implementing immediately. You have chosen to take the easy way out. Apparently, this policy is a done deal. This is a complicated issue, and how much research has the board actually done to properly address this issue? Just a few workshops were a half-baked gesture to come up with this terrible policy. No input from the transgender community, no best practices from other schools with successful, gender-inclusive bathrooms. You're also aware you're in violation of Title IX. You've been chosen to ignore that law. Your policy also goes on to encourage students with gender identity issues to seek out support and advice and guidance. You left out one other resource in that paragraph, and that is an attorney. I say shame.
That's Tom, thank you.
That's not
Thank you, that's Tom.
Thank you, members of the board.
Carlos Smith, following him will be Stephen Entone.
Good afternoon, school board members. My name is Carlos Guillermo Smith, and I'm the Government Affairs Manager for Equality Florida. I think it's very important that we have a conversation about the rule of law. My address is 2237 Stonington Avenue, Orlando, 32817. We need to talk about Title IX, the rule of law, and also the very real legal and financial liabilities that this district will be voluntarily subjecting itself to if you move forward with this gender inspection ordinance. So let's talk through the legal ramifications. Going forward with this would expose Marion County schools to a significant risk of investigations, lawsuits by federal agencies, private parties, and potentially the loss of federal funding. Why? Because Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972 prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in any education program, such as a public school that receives federal funding. This is binding guidance issued by the Department of Education and rulings from numerous federal courts that reinforce this guidance in the last 15 years. Look, I know we don't have a lot of time, but what you need to do is take a breath, and you need to basically assess if you really want to jump in front of this legal freight train, because the reality is, is that for the school board to believe that some court, somewhere, someday, would basically reverse 15 years of American jurisprudence on this issue and stand with and support the Marion County School Board is, is in the realm of hopeful fantasy. If you pass this, you'll get sued, you'll spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxpayer money, not on school books, not on learning instruments, but to go down this path, this path that is motivated by a misunderstanding of a marginalized community that is already vulnerable in our public schools. I invite you to please work with Equality Florida, we're happy to meet with you, to help you through this process. You're not the first school board to have to do this.
Thank you.
But I can see that you guys need some guidance, so thank you for listening. Have a good day. Please vote no or postpone this ordinance. Thank you.
Stephen Entone, and I apologize if I'm butchering names. Next up will be Reverend Lynch. Entone? Entone? Okay. Entone? Stephen Entone?
No, I'm Reverend Jim Lynch, was there somebody ahead of me?
Stephen Entone. Sorry, you're next, Mr. Lynch.
Sorry about that, we had a little misunderstanding of the name there. Stephen Entone, and 6542 Southeast 87th Street, Ocala, Florida, is my address. I'm going to squeeze five minutes into two. Thank you so much for everything you guys do every day to help our children, and all that work that you do, I think should be commended. I appreciate Chairman James for what he said about the focus on young people, and I believe everybody here tonight, actually on both sides of this, agrees. A quote that's often attributed to Thomas Jefferson is that eternal vigilance is the price of liberty. I'm happy that we are in a free society where liberty is important, and I believe we should protect that liberty. However, in doing that, we also need to be vigilant, and I believe the most important place, one of the most important places to be vigilant is in our school system with the innocence of our children at stake. And in that, I believe that the support for this board in this community, the majority support, is with you to say that facilities should be limited to people based on their birth gender. There is no scientific empirical evidence that has been peer-reviewed that shows that there is a true case for being transgender. And this means, I'm not going to argue that tonight, this means there's no way to prove it, so someone could easily go in there on a dare, on a prank, on a lie, whatever, and easily manipulate this rule or manipulate things going on. In Toronto, Canada, Christopher Hambrook took advantage of his transgender rights to gain access to a women's shelter, and he attempted to rape multiple women in there until he was caught. This is not something that may happen in any school, but this is where this can lead. There's a news article on this, right out of Toronto, Canada, where they've had these transgender laws passed. I know you guys know this, this is nothing that you have not seen before, and I thank you. I stand here, I've never done this before in my life, I thank you for listening to the silent majority, and I'm here because the silent majority will no longer remain silent, we will Thank you.
Reverend Lynch?
I'm Reverend Jim Lynch, my address is 15706 Southwest 46th Circle in Ocala. I pastor Open Circle Metropolitan Community Church in Bellevue, Florida. I had a whole prepared statement for five minutes, and I know I can't do five minutes, it's hard for a preacher to do less than that, but I do want to say, speaking from my experience, I've been pastoring in metropolitan community churches, which is a denomination that ministers particularly to gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and other disenfranchised people. And in my almost 30 years' experience as a pastor, I have dealt with and ministered to many, many, many people questioning gender identity and various places in the process of being transgender. I can tell you that transgender people, you know, for you or for me, for most people in this room, deciding which restroom to go to is a given. If you're a man, you go to the men's room, if you're a woman, you go to the women's room. But a woman born in a man's body, or a man born in a woman's body, it becomes a life-threatening decision every time they want to use a public restroom. In a recent survey, 78% of transgender identifying students claimed discrimination and abuse, physical abuse, in school. Four out of 10 transgender youths attempt suicide, and too many are successful. I think it's incumbent on the school board to provide for the needs of all of its students. The previous speaker talked about being in a free society, and I got to tell you that transgender people do not live in a free society, and it's time that they had that opportunity. Thank you.
Gina Duncan?
Good evening, I'm Gina Duncan. My address is 1326 Easton Avenue, Orlando, Florida. I am the Transgender Inclusion Director for Equality Florida. I am a transgender woman. A rise to speak in opposition to this flawed discriminatory and dangerous trans bathroom policy. You know, I work with school boards all across the state, and unlike Marion County, they are working to find solutions to issues involving bullying, harassment, and discrimination of LGBT students. At a recent school board conference last month, over half of the state's school boards were present, representing a majority of our students statewide. While these schools are working to provide safe learning environments, Marion is about to pass a policy that puts transgender students at risk. This highly vulnerable community will now be subject to harassment, to bullying, and quite frankly, is something that you were elected to prevent. For simply wanting to use the restroom, these kids will be harassed and bullied. It is a common knowledge that this bigoted agenda is being orchestrated by the Liberty Council, an organization whose president yesterday posted a tweet saying she was going to be sure to carry her Glock 45 into the bathroom. This is the door of hysteria and hatred you are opening by passing this policy. Finally, by passing this policy, you will forever be known as the North Carolina of school boards. Times are changing, society is changing, and it's time for Marion County to step out of the dark ages and support all students so they can be their true and authentic selves. Otherwise, the next trans student to attempt suicide will clearly be on your hands. Thank you.
Tristan Burns?
Who's the next one?
Tristan Burns, followed by Harold Phillips.
Hi, my name is Tristan Burns. I'm a licensed mental health counselor in the state of Florida.
The name and
Sorry. My name's Tristan Burns. My address is 439th Avenue South, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33705. I'm a licensed mental health counselor in the state of Florida. I'm a father, I'm a son of a retired high school principal. And I say all that to know that, of course, safety is always an issue in schools, but so is education, and so is safety of children, and so is testing scores and betterment of children. All of that comes into play. And by, by causing things like having students, teachers, and staff regulate bathroom usage for a student, not only do I feel like that's a waste of school board resources, number one, and school resources, number two, it kind of sets up for lawsuits and discrimination and other pieces that I know I wouldn't want that to come upon me as an employer or as a school district. And I also noticed in the hallway that you have all of the, you know, the employment regulations, the OSHA rules, the EEOC rules, all hanging in the hallway, because that's where I was, because we're so packed tonight, and all of those organizations, OSHA, EEOC... And all of those organizations, OSHA, EEOC, have stated that they're aligning all of the bathroom rules with the gender that you want to present, not the gender that you were birthed with. So, all of the federal rules are going against everything that you're thinking about doing tonight, including Title IX. I know when my mom was a high school principal, she talked all the time about the importance of Title IX funding to get what she needed for her students. Are you really wanting to risk principals and teachers struggling to get what they need for their students, to improve your test scores, and do everything that you guys are looked upon from a state level just because of this one bathroom incident? I don't think it's worth it. So I say vote no.
Mr. Harold Phillips, followed by Ms. Kathy Phillips.
Harold Phillips, 16888 Northwest 120th Street, Marston, Florida, 32668. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I expected, you're gonna hear from all kinds of people from all over, giving you all the reasons why you shouldn't continue to stand for this issue. It's been very unfortunate that our superintendent decided on his own, with the advice of administrators, to change the policy that's been in existence in Marion County for nearly a hundred years, and decide that they're gonna change and lose the privacy of most of the students in Marion County for the sake of a very few. So I listened tonight, and I heard Mr. Adalbello, representing the teachers' union, talk about family engagement. So that's why I'm here, is family engagement. My son and forty-three thousand other students in this want their privacy. And until the Supreme Court of the United States decides whether our privacy does not trump their rights, that their so-called rights that they're trying to create with a transgender that hasn't even been determined sex yet in the, in the courts, I ask you to stay firm with your decision, and let's let the Supreme Court of the United States fight this battle and see where it lies. In the meantime, the privacy of our students should be protected in the restrooms. And I also want to tell you, speaking to multiple teachers in Marion County, they want their privacy and their restrooms back as well. And Mr. Adalbello talked about how much we need to appreciate their teachers. Well, the best way you can appreciate them is give them their privacy back. I understand that there are some issues with the other side of this equation, and they're gonna continue to use innuendos and misinformation to try to sway your judgment. But I ask you to stand for the rights of the vast majority of the students in Marion County and continue to support the resolution that you have. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, in your words to one of your employees two weeks ago at our meeting, you said, "Let's use common sense in this situation." So I'm asking you tonight, use common sense and vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Kathy Phillips, followed by Sue Clifton, or Sarah Clifton, I'm sorry.
Kathy Phillips, 6341 Southwest 103rd Lane, Ocala, Florida. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight on behalf of anybody who is greatly gonna be impacted by the proposal of this agenda tonight. You're gonna hear a lot of statistics, there's probably gonna be a lot of upset people, but I think maybe you ought to hear from a mother. I have been a resident of Marion County for twenty-seven years, and I have a daughter that graduated from Marion County schools. I understand what it is to fear your child's safety when you're away, when they're away from your protection, and I'm as passionate about this proposal as everyone here, but for different reasons. I personally don't understand why this issue had to be an emergency with five weeks left in the year. I also don't understand how one person could complain about a bathroom issue, and this makes this an emergency agenda. I complained for four years to the assistant principal of Bellevue High about my daughter being bullied, ridiculed, and harassed by a group of boys, and was told there was nothing they could do until she was physically harmed. Now, I understand that there are some policies that have changed, and if I were to file these complaints now, they would be documented and correction would be taken. It would also no longer fall under the category of bullying, but now would be labeled as a hate crime. It's extremely difficult for a transgender teen to coexist in this environment and be true to themselves while being publicly shunned. Meeting basic needs such as the trip to the bathroom should not be a traumatic event. Contrary to popular belief, these kids do not lean under stalls and look at others' genitals. All they want to do is pee. Forcing a teen into a bathroom of a sex other than which they identify would, could fall under the category of a hate crime, and I wish the general public would educate themselves on the difference between transgendered and gay and lesbian. Transgendered individuals feel as if they are trapped in a body that doesn't belong to them, and like my daughter, most were depressed and suicidal. The number one and two causes of death for these teens are suicide and murder. My daughter has risen above the odds, graduating high school with high honors, and is a graduate of the University of Florida, and has become a valued citizen of Gainesville, often lecturing at the university on gender issues.
It's time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for listening to me, and I'm very sorry that I went over and I asked that you please continue to keep this in place.
Sarah Clifton, followed by Randy Osborne.
My name is Sarah Clifton. I live at 1271 Northeast 11th Circle here in Ocala. My youngest daughter is a graduate of Forest High School. I am concerned because I think that we are putting political issues ahead of the safety of the students. The true student, the students that are truly at risk in this particular instance are not the vast majority who don't have to worry about if they have to go to the bathroom, they just go. It's the handful of students that don't mark the right box as far as some of the administration is concerned. They are the children that are at risk of physical harm, of bullying, of being outed, however you want to put it, whatever nomenclature you want to use, these are the students whose privacy is being invaded. This is a bad resolution. It is not an emergency if you're doing it wrong. Doing something doesn't help if what you're doing is wrong. I urge you to take the time to find out how other school systems have successfully managed to put this issue to rest for decades. Some school systems have dealt with this over twenty years ago, but if you try to do something in this speedy fashion and call it an emergency so that you can campaign on it and make this half campaign and half prayer meeting, that is not what is best for the students of Marion County. Thank you.
Randy Osborne, followed by Jessica Leonhart.
Marion County School Board Chairman, thank you for engaging this issue and listening to this topic.
New address.
My name is Randy Osborne, 4203 Northwest Highway 225A, Ocala, Florida. And I'm gonna use a vernacular, a school vernacular, if I may. Equality Florida, on presentation, they got an A. On accuracy, they got an F. You see, our founding fathers set up a republic, a constitutional republic, and it's the longest living form of democracy ever in the history of our nation. And they set it up, and they had what's called separation of powers. And I want to remind this board that the courts were never designed to legislate from the bench, and that is what they're doing. In fact, our founding fathers actually, they took local control, they pushed the control off the federal government. In fact, the Tenth Amendment is very, very clear in our constitution of what the federal powers have the right to do. And the rest of it, they pushed down to the states, and then they pushed it down to the communities. And that is the reason and the value of this board, is to make those decisions. And thirdly, I want to say this, a person's freedom, personal freedoms, they end when they impede the rights of others. And this is exactly what's going on here. It is impeding the rights of others. And when somebody's rights impede those, then you have to step in and say, "No, that we're not going to do that." And then the third thing I want to remind you, and just let you know, litigation's coming, okay? There's no way that you're gonna get out of this. One way, the decision that you make today, you will get into litigation on it. And what I would suggest is to get on the right side of that litigation. Liberty Council has offered, has made an open offer, and they reminded me just before I walked in here, to let this board know that they have made an open offer to support this board in making the right decision in defending this young man. Thank you.
Jessica Damon Leonhart, followed by Thomas Ryan.
My name is Damian Leonhart, legal name Jessica Leonhart. I live at 11150 Rolling Hills Road, Apartment 15, Danellon, Florida, 34431. I am a transgender student here in Marion County. I'm seventeen. I am a senior in high school. I am currently homeschooled because I was shoved out of the school system and almost forced to end my education early for being transgender. I tried to get help. I was told by teachers and other staff guidance counselors that maybe if I wasn't doing this transgender thing, I wouldn't get pulled out of bathrooms and beaten, thrown into dumpsters, and almost commit suicide because of it. I was born with a vagina. I was given the title of a girl at birth. I do not align with that gender. But still, I used the women's bathroom when I was in school. I had a shaved head, bound my breasts down, and wore pants and all male clothing. And yet, by women, I was drug out of the restroom and called a sexual predator. How would you feel that the way I am dressed now, if I went into the men's room? The same exact thing would happen. I can't go into either, and many other students can't go into either because of these laws. You're telling the students of Marion County to kill themselves because we don't care about them. There are many, many transgender students here in Marion County, more than you know of. And you are basically telling them that we don't care about your safety. You are putting the safety and health at risk of the children that you say you want to protect. It's not right. Please vote no.
Thomas Ryan, followed by Elizabeth Miller and Madison Myers. Thomas Ryan, okay, not present. Okay, Elizabeth Miller and Madison Myers are sharing their minutes.
My name is Beth Miller, and I live at 3830 Southeast 15th Street, Ocala, Florida. And I am here to support my son, Matthew. I am the parent of a transgender child. I want you to know that it takes tremendous courage for these students every day to get up, to go to school, and to be there, and to live their truth. And really, we all want to live our truth. We want to be accepted for who we are. This is not a black or white issue, and you are all elected to support all of your students, not just the children who are not transgender. And by putting this law into place, you are doing exactly that. You are not supporting all of your students, all of them. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I love my child just like every other parent in this room loves their child. I want my child to be treated fairly and to be treated justly, and that is what this is about. I'm asking you, as a parent, to vote no.
Hello. I am Matthew Eli Myers, and I am a transgender student of Marion County. I feel discrimination every day based on my, on my birth gender. I was born female, and now I identify as male. I, I do not want to face prejudice in the schools, in my school, and this would create worse. I'm already told, "Let the men do the work," even though I tell them I am a man too. I would appreciate if you would vote no, because you may be thinking you are protecting others when you're actually ruining others' lives. Thank you.
Vernon, uh...
Yulinger?
Yulinger, thank you. Vernon Yulinger, followed by William Pierce.
I'm Vernon Yulinger. I live at 8448 Southwest 88th Place in Ocala. George, Superintendent George Tommons and board. I'm here to, this is a greater problem, I guess, but I think you need to stand your ground on the decision. I feel that if the transgender people need psychological help, I think that needs to be provided. We don't wanna, we love everybody, and we don't wanna create, but for one or two in a whole school system, it seems like a big, you need, you got an opportunity that you need to investigate a little bit more. I felt that too much time had been put in it, but I'm wrong. Thank you.
Mr. William Pierce, to be followed by Harley Rackley.
Hello, board members. My name is William Pierce. My address is 14168 Northeast 53rd Court Road, Central Florida, 32113. Just, just listening to all this, I, I follow a lot of stuff in the world, and I, I'm just gonna come right out and say it, 'cause, you know, we are what we are, just like the transgender said they are. I stand here, I believe in my heart, representing Jesus Christ, the Lord of everything. And Jesus said, "We are to love everybody, but to allow people that believe they are men and, or girls that believe they are boys, and vice versa, to go into restrooms with opposite sex is just looking for, of a battle. That's looking for major trouble." And that's common sense, in my opinion. You know, you're like the one guy said over there, "You're gonna, you're gonna have problems, you're gonna run into problems whether you like it or not, that's just gonna happen." Jesus said the world hated Him before it hated us. So if you stand for Him, the world's gonna hate you. And we're in that day. We are in that day and time when the world ain't gonna love you because you ain't of the world. If you're of the world, the world's gonna love you. And that's common sense for, for a person like myself that is a born again Christian. So, I was bullied in school. I know what it's like to be bullied. I had a boy that used to bully me all the time. One day on a Saturday, he come up bullying me at the Jiffy Store, and I turned around and clocked his plow. And when I did that, that boy never bullied me no more. Am I saying that that's the right way to do it? No. But sometimes, you gotta do what you gotta do. I mean, but all I can say is, stand for what's right, or you're gonna fall for what's wrong. And you guys know that, you ladies know that, everybody knows that. Even if we don't want to admit it, we still know right is right and wrong is wrong. If you're mentally dis, um, incapable, well, yeah, then you got a reason to not know right from right and wrong from wrong. But otherwise, that's it. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
Harley Rackley, followed by Roger Nectle.
Harley Wayne Rackley, I am known. We have 6706 Southwest, 117th Street in Ocala, Florida. I want to commend you on taking that stand you took. I did a little research myself, and I appreciate the people that are having problems, but you stood up for ninety-nine point seven percent of the people. I looked it up, it's point three percent of the people are transgenders. And while political correctness, I want to look out also for the rights of the ninety-nine percent of the people. I'm a granddad, I've been around longer than most anybody that spoke today. I'm a grandfather, I'm... I'm a grandfather, I've got children, I've got great-grandchild, I've been around a long time. I've seen a lot of different things happen. I think that the influence that you would have on little children getting confused about if they see a boy in a girl's restroom, a girl in a boy's restroom, or vice versa, that could be confusing to a small child. I was, I just, it doesn't make sense to me whatsoever. And I just think, like I said, I commend you for doing that. Uh, I feel sorry for anyone that would be in that position, but you don't sacrifice the majority. By my name, I looked that up, ninety-nine percent of the people are not transgenders. And so, this political correctness of making it okay for the civil rights for that little bit and overlook the civil rights for the others, and I just think that would be a serious mistake to change. I commend you on taking that stand that you did. And like I said, God loves everybody, but let's keep a guy, a guy, and a girl, a girl, especially with the influence on little young children. I don't want any confusion, I wouldn't want it on my grandchildren. I don't want to have to explain why a boy can go in a girl's restroom or vice versa. Thank you a lot.
Roger Nectal, followed by Susie Hawks.
Roger Nectal, 12727 Southeast 97 Terrace in beautiful Summerfield. Uh, my daughter was a bipolar person, so I looked up the definition of bipolar. It's a simple definition, I couldn't believe it in the dictionary. Containing two contradictory qualities. Now we're calling bipolar people, or a form of it, transgender. My biggest fear is, the, the rest of your students are gonna get confused. Fear. They're not gonna be doing the, what they should be doing, they're gonna be confused. They're gonna be in a classroom, and they have to go to the bathroom, they're gonna say to themselves, maybe I better just cross my legs until I can find a friend to go with me. And even with a friend, when they go in the bathroom, there's always the fear that the opposite gender is gonna walk in. The kids have so many fears as it is now, the world is so intermoral. This is just one more agenda, which I believe is Agenda 21, to make it rougher and tougher on this country. We are the greatest nation in the world. We do most of the inventions, we are the brightest in the world, but we are gonna destroy ourselves. That's it.
Susie Hawks, followed by Reverend Ani.
I'm Susie Hawks, 1223 Summer Gate Drive, Valrico, Florida. I'm gonna read, 'cause...
Where, where? Where in Florida?
Valrico, near Tampa. Based on one physical characteristic, a doctor made a decision of my gender the moment I was born. This wasn't my choice. Let's speak to the number just mentioned, ninety-nine point seven. Boy, that makes me rarer than a hen's tooth. You're not gonna see much of us. I really don't know what your issue is. A country built on morality, integrity, and unity, we have armed forces trained not to leave a man behind. I see that going south right now. What I see here is a group of people in disagreement over something we pride in, freedom. Such a shame you're proposing, proposing to take that freedom of choice from the young, less fortunate, children who cannot fight in the same way for themselves. There's nothing to fear here, we've used the bathrooms for years. I'm not from around here, and yet I feel ashamed that this meeting is happening in a progressive state. This shows examples that rules don't count against federal government. Just legitimizing, bullying, both by school to a young child and children to other children. Ignoring that education is the solution. Wow, the school. This goes backwards in human rights. It wasn't long ago, people were uncomfortable with the color of who they sat next to. Lower pay for women still exists. This sets a precedence and is a start of regression and increased discrimination. Heading towards race, sex, disability, who's next? Thank you.
Reverend Ani, followed by and Mr. Lewis.
Hello, I'm Reverend Janet Ani. My address is P.O. Box 147 in East Lake Weir, Florida. As a religious leader in Marion County, I am attuned to words and statements that call us to aspire to transcendent ideals. Two phrases in the philosophy of the Marion County Schools and the mission statement of Vanguard High School jumped out at me. The provision of experiences to help children and youth become responsible, intelligent, and functioning citizens in a democracy, and to educate students to be responsible citizens in a changing world. Democracy and changing are theological words. Jesus addressed both of them when He invited the weary and the heavy laden to rest in Him. One of the reasons that Marion County is a great place to live is because the citizenry and the institutions are engaged in upholding democratic principles that speak to the high ideals of our country, while grappling with a world that is changing more rapidly than many of us would like. It's a delicate balancing act, one that makes us weary and heavy laden. The issue before the Marion County School Board is only nominally about an individual's right to privacy, performing a biological function. What this issue is about is identity, both personal and communal. Transgender persons deserve our compassion, it is not a life that anyone would choose. They face rejection, suicide and murder is high. Surely, we can bend a little bit to obey the laws and accommodate the most vulnerable among us. Don't all of our religious traditions require this at least from us? I would encourage you good and thoughtful people of the Marion County School Board to heed Jesus's admonition to fear not, and to continue the good work in creating a safe environment for all of the students to grow into their responsible and compassionate citizens in a changing world. Thank you.
Melody Lewis, followed by Roxelle Mayberry. Melody Lewis?
Hi, my name is Melody, um, my legal name is Demetrius Lewis. Um, P.O. Box 770874, Ocala, Florida, 34477. I'm a fifteen-year resident of Marion County. I'm a parent of five beautiful babies. I run a local support group, um, here in Ocala. I've had the privilege of meeting many trans people here in this community, including some of the youth that go to our schools. These kids face a lot of adversity, from their peers as well as from society because of who they are. Statistically speaking, one in eight trans kids will be assaulted either physically or sexually in their schools. And this isn't even including outside of a school environment, this is just within a school. This policy would be an extension of the bullying and discrimination these kids face on a daily basis, passed by those who claim to have their best interests at heart. It is not right to invade their privacy and make them prove their identities to this school board or to anyone else. You claim this is about protecting the privacy of our kids, but in reality, this policy would be a direct infringement on those kids' privacy. It sets a standard that a child must prove that they are anatomically congruent with what some beliefs dictate gender. Despite the overwhelming evidence, those factors are not the only thing that determine gender. You must vote no. No to the invasion of our kids' privacy, no to bullying through policy, no to gender inspection policies. Thank you.
Roxelle Mayberry, followed by Linda Fambro.
My name is Ronald Mayberry. I live 1215 Northeast 34th Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34470. And I thank you for the chairman and the board that have my, have, hear my say. I'm gonna sound a little selfish, because I am a grandfather, I have one grandchild in, in school in Marion County. I've gone, I've got two great-granddaughters going to school in Marion County, and I don't like to see what's happening in, in this area, what people have been suggesting. I heard on the other day that, that the European leaders said that while they weren't gonna come to Virginia or North Carolina because of their rules and regulations about their schools. I remember that we had revolutionary work telling the Europeans to stay away, and had, we have our own rights to do. I, I can, I, I feel for the transgender people, I, I pray for them, and I, I think that we have a wonderful country, a wonderful citizenship. I believe that we, we can work together and work this out, and thank you.
Linda Fambro, followed by Gary Score. Gil Shore, Gary Gil Shore.
Okay, Linda Fambro, 61 Oak Circle, Ocala, Florida, 34472. First of all, I understand the equality and the rights of the transgender, but in the same respect, I want the same equality and rights for my daughter, for our children, and our schools. If it's equal rights that the transgender want, then don't take my rights and my daughter's rights away because they want to share a bathroom. There's equal rights for men, for women, and transgender. There needs to be three bathrooms, if that's what it takes, available to accommodate each birth gender. My concern is not that the transgenders who truly identify themselves as a man or a woman. My concern is that some pervert looking for the opportunity to dress as a transgender and prey on innocent children, and because of their perverted actions, scars our children for life. Also, girls will be afraid to go to the bathrooms, and the medical fact is when you hold your urine, it causes UTIs. And that shouldn't have to happen to our girls. So, Marion County, I ask that you stand firm in the men, in the men's bathroom, the girls in the girls' bathrooms. And if we can find a way, an expense, to provide a third bathroom for transgender, it's equal rights for everybody. And that's what we're here for, equal rights and safety of our children. Thank you.
Gary Gil Score, to be followed by Hannah Willard.
Good afternoon, or actually, good evening now, everyone. My name is Gary Gil Shore, and I live at 2522 Southeast 179th Avenue in Silver Springs, Florida, 34488. And I'm, I'm kinda scratching my head a little bit here, because I hear all of this talk about, from the other side, about sexual predators, about rapists, about the danger for these children. And if you actually break down the statistics and look at it, you'll see that it is not transgender people who are being victimizers, but it is transgender people who are being the victims of exactly that type of behavior. And so, it is the fiduciary duty of this school board to provide a safe learning environment for all of Marion County's children. And I don't think that this policy does that one bit. In fact, I think any of you considering it should really be ashamed of yourselves, because it's putting innocent children, innocent children at risk by forcing them to use a bathroom that they do not identify with, within their gender. Now, it's a fundamental concept of American justice, that we do not hold whole glasses of people guilty for their actions. We hold individuals guilty for their actions. And if there is an individual in a bathroom, whether they are transgendered or cisgendered or whatever, behaving badly, that's still illegal. And that's how every other school system that has an inclusive gender policy handles it. If someone's behaving badly in the bathroom, hold that individual responsible. But do not take children that do not identify with a gender and force them into the wrong bathroom. Now, this is a little bit of a difficult concept, it's a little bit hard for me to understand, because I identify with the gender I was born with. But we have to have compassion and understanding for those who are born different from us. And that's what I ask you to do, and I ask you to vote no on this ridiculous proposal. Thank you.
Hannah Willard, followed by Emily Yannick.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Hannah Willard. I live at 1627 and a half, East Concord Street, Orlando, Florida, 32803. And I'm the Policy and Outreach Coordinator for Equality Florida. I've had the pleasure of speaking with several of you about this hastily conceived and reckless gender inspection resolution that would put Marion County students at risk. I stand strongly in opposition to this resolution. It's unenforceable, inappropriate, and has no basis in fact. Every student needs to use the restroom, and every student expects safety and privacy when using them. But this gender inspection resolution would invade everyone's personal and medical privacy. This resolution would require all students to provide proof that their anatomy matches either the sex on their birth certificate or the sign at the door. Who will be responsible for conducting these inspections? How will they do that? In practice, these gender inspection bills risk everyone's safety and privacy in restrooms, especially and including transgender people. I work with school boards all across the state who are taking steps towards including and embracing gay and transgender students with their policies and procedures. I was in Brevard County this morning, working with the school district there, who just decided to move a policy forward that would actually proactively protect LGBTQ students. This is the only school district in Florida that is considering this draconian measure that would further stigmatize transgender students. I'd also like to explain why there are several of us who've come in from other cities around the state. We're here because Equality Florida functions to protect all Floridians. And the LGBT community here in Marion County is terrified. I've spoken to transgender and gender nonconforming people over the last week who feel it would be profoundly dangerous for them to testify tonight. These people are terrified to give their physical addresses, they're terrified to be on camera, they're terrified because they face physical violence and harassment every single day. This very hearing is putting transgender people at risk. Imagine the consequences of this reckless resolution poised to take effect tomorrow. Here's the bottom line, transgender girls are girls, and they belong in the girls' room. Transgender boys are boys, and they belong in the boys' room. Most important thing to know is that this is dangerous, and I ask you to vote no on this reckless resolution. Thank you.
Emily Yannick, followed by Liberty Thurman. Emily, Y-A-H-N-I-G. Yannick? Liberty Thurman.
I'm Liberty Thurman, 1311 Northeast 13th Avenue. I'm here on a different issue, but I do believe my daughter was treated unfairly. She was suspended from school for ten days because she felt the need to defend herself. She felt, she was threatened, she was assaulted, and she did not want to get hurt any worse. Her and another student had a verbal altercation during PE. At that time, the bell rang, shortly after the altercation, the bell rang. My daughter left the gym walking away from this. I have a video that shows all of this, and I would love for all of you to see that, not, maybe not right now, at some other time, that you can see my daughter trying to get away from this child. During that time, my daughter is having water squirted on her, she is being pushed, and then it proceeds to her hair being pulled so hard that her neck get, whips backwards. The next time they could have touched her, it would have been, she'd have been on the ground. At that time, my daughter turned around and defended herself. And she got suspended for ten days. Administration told me it was because she didn't come to them during the verbal altercation at PE. There's a, you know, I mean, she's thirteen years old, so it makes it really hard to say that a thirteen-year-old should have went to an adult. Yes, I understand that, but at some point in time, shouldn't the adult have been there to protect my child? As she was being assaulted, verbally assaulted, um... I don't know, hold on. You know, the administration told me that there was adults all around that could, that she could have gone to. Well, if there was all these adults around, where was the supervision? I also teach school, I know that in my classroom, if I see a verbal altercation going on, I'm gonna intervene somewhere in there. I don't know how they can sit here and say to me that nobody saw this, and that there wasn't an adult supervising this when my daughter was the one being assaulted and got in trouble for defending herself. So when we say we're gonna suspend both of them for the same issue, for the same fight, the same punishment, you're giving that bully the upper hand to say, you know what, it doesn't matter, I've been in trouble before, I can take another ten-day suspension. I have a daughter that is, makes good grades, she does well on her state testing, she has never been in trouble, she's never even had a referral until this time, and now... And now she's, have, her grades have fallen to where she's at Ds and Fs from a ten-day suspension. I'm just asking, somehow, something in this has to change.
Mr. James, this, this is one where I wanna say something to this lady very briefly. School board members, I have seen the tapes.
Miss Stacy.
This is true.
Miss Stacy.
And we need to look at this next time in our code of conduct.
Miss Stacy.
Mr. James, I can talk to the, I'll go outside and talk to her then.
That's a good idea.
I'll go outside and talk to her.
Okay, let's continue.
Esperanza Castaneda, followed by Sandra Truso.
My name is Esperanza Castaneda, two-five Southeast Sixty-second Avenue. Okay, is this better? I know we're having a hard time hearing out there. I did some research. In Florida, you can get a birth certificate and a driver's license changed to your correct gender without gender reassignment surgery. Federally, you can get a passport, you can get diplomatic papers. HUD and OSHA have you agree to use somebody's proper agenda, so at the Florida level and the federal level. As a business, I know I have to find OSHA laws or follow OSHA laws. Marion County has its own policy against bullying. And we've certainly heard a lot of problems that are going on. Add on this problem of singling out transgender students and you are putting a target on their back. Somebody's already mentioned Title IX problems. There's a saying, false expectations appearing, appearing real. That's what fear is. I'm a mother, I understand that we all wanna protect our children. Well, that includes parents of transgender children. Lots of people have signed up. The National Task Force to End Sexual and Domestic Violence recognizes the right of transgender people to use their facilities. This is an opportunity for education and growth. Instead, we've reacted with a knee-jerk reaction, at least many of us have. As somebody said, we have a fiduciary and constitution, constitutional right, duty, excuse me, to protect all our children. Excuse me. A hundred years ago, somebody mentioned a policy that was a hundred years old. I'd like to point out that a hundred years ago, this school board could not have be seated. Women couldn't vote or hold office. Black people were basically barred from voting and holding office. You can't create your own facts. There is plenty of scientific evidence that, thank you, that, that follows this up. I hope you do the right thing.
Sandra Truso, followed by Michael Richard Barrett.
Sandy Truso, twenty-eight forty-five Northeast Thirty-First Place, Ocala. Since our local pa, paper and a speaker at Thursday's workshop felt she was the only one who supported transgender children that day, let me say that I also stood for supporting those children, but in the form of protecting their safety rather than, from supporting what I consider to be a misguided concept of civil rights. A girl who physically remains female while using a boy's bathroom is at risk at these times where anything goes. Allowing this action to pass in our school district heightens the possibility of hastening the expansion of this action in public bathrooms where, everywhere. And at this point, the same girl will no longer be dealing with boys' bathrooms. She'll be dealing with grown men, placing her at even greater risk. Why would anyone want to subject a truly transgendered child, already ridiculed and bullied, to this sort of thing? There's also no way of proving one to be transgendered, not through DNA, not through anything showing up in the brain. We can only go by their claim that they perceive themselves to be of the opposite sex from their birth sex. Therefore, anyone of dark intentions could dishonestly make that claim. Why would anyone want to subject non-transgendered children to this deliberately dark deception, thereby placing them at risk as well? No thinking person would deny this potential. This is already happening in schools and public bathrooms across this nation, but who would want to increase this nightmare by legally increasing the risk? May I also refute the implication of the workshop speaker and a Star Banner editorial that some board members have only opposed this issue because they're up for reelection. However, these people have worked to protect children for many years, and I know that Nancy Stacy has fought for children as a parent, as a private citizen, and long before she ever thought of running for school board. I finally respectfully request that you take the initiative in this battle to protect all of our children, not just transgendered, all of them, beginning with voting to adopt the resolution before you. Thank you.
Michael Richard Barrett, followed by Mark Sapp.
Hello, my name is Michael Richard Barrett. I go by Melina Reyna Spahnhold. My address is eight-six-eight-nine Southeast Sixty-ninth Terrace in Trenton, Florida, three-two-six-nine-three. It occurs to me that so much of this comes from a fear of us, of who we are and what we are about. So I thought I would share with you some of my story. I am a trans woman. I am also a single parent with full custody of two young teenage kids. I'm also going back to school for a degree in computer programming. Since beginning my transmission, transition a few months ago, I have made more friends than I ever thought possible for me to do. I have met wonderful people. I've made connections and been more engaged in everything I do. Online, thankfully, it is getting easier for me to find others like me, friends I never would have heard of before, connections I never would have found. When I travel, I try to meet with at least one of my new friends from online groups or others. I now enjoy work, waking up every day and looking forward to the next. Life no longer feels drab. I no longer seek to fill that monochrome with the vibrancy of others and have instead found my own. That's not to say I never had some before, I just have so much more now. I've been much happier and content with myself. I have rekindled my desire to achieve and found a motivation to keep going. I'm confident that my teachers at Santa Fe would say I am among their best students and I work hard to maintain that. The world is more engaging and it feels so good. I could choose not to transition, but it's made so many things so much better. Why would I want to? In the words of my friend Sophie, "We go where few dare to tread and many of us thrive there." Imagine that, when you stop fearing walls, you don't need brakes.
Mark Sapp, followed by Jane Morley.
Good evening, Chair, Board, Mr. Superintendent, Mark Sapp, three-four-two-five Northeast Forty-Fourth Place, Ocala, Florida. A society that values its privileges over its principles soon loses both. We must stand on principle, we must stand on what is real, we must stand on what exists, not what is a fallacy, not the way we feel, but what is matter of foundation. I don't care if you're LBGTE or if you're heterosexual or if you come from the South African Flying Spider Monkey Club. There are certain things in this world that cannot be changed. Your gender is one of them. You can change the way you look, you can change the way you feel. And maybe an amendment needs to be made where we have small unisex bathrooms in each school, but the economic implications of that far outweigh the three percent that can be dealt with on an individual basis. Ninety-seven percent of our students identify a certain way the rest of the world has for about eleven thousand years. We do not mean to make brash decisions. We need to handle each individual in compassion and with love. I don't believe in ostracizing every single person out there, but I believe that decision can be made and I do support this amendment. Thank you.
Jane Morley, followed by Bernardino Williams. Jane Morley.
No response.
Apparently she left.
Hello, my name is Bernardino Diana Williams. My address is thirteen-thirty Southeast Fifteenth Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-one. This country has laws that we should follow and I'm concerned that the school board is enacting restrictions that will end up costing the taxpayers big bucks to defend. I think our school board, if I may generalize, needs to consider the effects of their actions on the students. These individuals, transgender as they may be, are the classmates of our students. They are athletes, they are IB students, and they are our children's friends. They are human beings that are not causing any disruption, they are appreciated by other students, and they bring value to the entire student body. This is a legal issue. I wanna share two personal experiences. One of my daughters brought home a friend when she was still in high school. This young man had major issues at home, plus he was black and he was gay. He ended up living with us for three years. I cannot tell you what a pleasure he was. We gained a new level of appreciation for his circumstances. We are all God's children. Second story has to do with ridicule. This one touches my family so profoundly. My brother's son just committed suicide recently. Now, he had internal challenges that he perceived to be insurmountable. Let's recognize the suicide rate of our young people. We are adding trauma to an already traumatic world for these students. These are human beings we are talking about and when their world may be overloaded because of some antiquated views of the world, repercussions will be on your shoulders. My daughter teaches in the school system, she sees this every day, and the students, to their credit, have worked around these issues. Schools and principals have worked around these issues. They, the kids, are the ones who should be, we should be looking out for. We even, you even say that you are. Are you really? Obey the law. Thank you.
Brandon Cook, followed by Ebony Butler.
Hello and thank you so much for hearing from me. My name is Brandon Cook. I live in eighteen Hickory Track, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-two. I just wanted to make a few points to you all today and I really appreciate the hard work that you've done. I just, I think that bathrooms are more based on sex than gender. Gender is perceptive, but sex is not. Sex is based on our reproductive organs. So if you're born with that organ, you should go to that bathroom. If we go by perception instead of reality, then we're in a place where a woman, where she sees a man come in, has a right to perceive that she needs to defend herself, whether right or wrong. I think that the government is instituted to provide people with safety so that those type of things don't happen. If we didn't make that decision, then we'd be in a place where the government is not protecting her, why shouldn't she protect herself? So I think that if anything, we should definitely look forward to this amendment, we should push forward for that, not necessarily because of any hatred towards transgendered people, but let's just think about it honestly. If we let women go into a men's bathroom, how are they safe? A man can easily overpower them. A man may change his sex, but that doesn't give up his power that he has over a woman, the ability to, to throw them around, that natural strength. So I think that we should consider that as safety, more so than we consider what someone thinks or believes in one minute that can easily change in the next. Thank you so much for your time.
Ebony Butler, followed by Mary Hedman.
Good evening, my name's Ebony Butler. I live in nineteen Pine Court, Ocala, Florida. I just wanted to state that earlier when everybody was talking about, you know, safety and different things about the bathroom, I wanted to state that the conclusion that I've come to with the equality from Orlando being here, that there's actually a main agenda. It's not about the bathroom, it's not about transgender, it's one main thing, just to shove an agenda down your throat. And that's what I'm seeing today. And there are things that are black and white, not everything's, hardly anything's gray. There are things that are black and white and male and female is black and white. And I believe if you're born a man, you need to go to the man's bathroom. If you're born a woman, you need to go to a woman's bathroom. It doesn't matter, I could, I could identify myself with a cow. Does that mean I need to go outside and eat grass? No, it does not mean that. So what we're born with is what we need to, need to stick to and for, also for the safety. And when people were talking about, you know, the safety of their children, that's also very important for people that have small children. And I just wanted to express that, you know, when the lady was talking about antiquated beliefs and traditions and those antiquated thoughts come from our conscience. And I know I spoke about this earlier, but it's a reason we have a conscience and our conscience shows us what's right and what's wrong and what's black and what's right. And I just wanted to keep it the way it is and vote yes on keeping boys in the boys' bathroom and girls in the girls' bathroom.
Mary Hedman, followed by Wanda Sanchez.
Hello, my name's Mary Hedman and I live at eight-six-six-five Southeast One-Sixty-Eight Kittredge Loop in the Villages in Marion County. Dear members of the school board, tonight you have an opportunity to stand up for all of your kids by voting against this emergency, and I'm not sure why it's an emergency, resolution targeting our transgendered youth. As a Marion County resident, a former school counselor, and treasurer of P Flag Lady Lake, I believe you are responsible for the well-being of every child and the fiscal health of our school system. A vote in favor of this discriminatory, short-sighted resolution is a vote against some of our kids and a threat to the Title IX funding you receive from the federal government. Thus, it is a poor move on many levels. This issue has already been decided in the U.S. Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals and I realize you're not under the Fourth Court of Appeals, but let's face it, a trend is a trend. Why do you think it will be any different when you are challenged, and I'm sure you will be? You can even use this court decision to defend your no vote on this issue. Besides all of this, where do you think our trans kids have been going to the bathroom before? Has there even been one serious incident to warrant this action? Even Fox News, and I hate quoting Fox News, but even Fox News has said, "This is a solution in search of a problem." They researched it and found no instances of people using laws meant to protect transgendered people as cover for committing a crime. It is obvious that many of us will be watching what is ultimately decided on this issue and remembering. And I would like to mention one other little tenet of our country, and that is separation of church and state. Thank you very much.
Okay, Wayne, Wanda Sanchez, followed by George Broadwell. Wanda Sanchez. George Broadwell.
Hi, my name is George Broadwell, five-zero-zero-eight Southwest Ninety-first Drive, Gainesville, Florida. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in opposition to the regulation that's being considered. I'm a professor at UF, speaking on my own, not on behalf of the university. I teach a lot of transgender students and I think it's important that all our educational environments be safe and welcoming to all students. The sad fact is that LGB students often did not feel safe in schools. A national survey of transgender students in two thousand nine found that ninety percent of them had, say they have heard derogatory remarks- had said they have heard derogatory remarks, two-thirds say they feel physically unsafe at school, half have missed school because they feel unsafe or uncomfortable. Consider transgender girls, for example, who identify as girls and dress as girls. They're not comfortable or safe when forced to use the boy room, boys' room, and they're particularly likely to be bullied in this case. The American Academy of Pediatrics, which is doctors who specialize in children's mental and physical health, opposes any legislation of this sort, and their spokesman spoke about similar legislation in the state of North Carolina, so I'd like to quote what the American Academy of Pediatrics said. "As pediatricians, we know firsthand how increasing burdens and barriers for youth who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender can increase their risk of depression, substance abuse, dropping out of school, or suicide. Adolescents who are transgender are already at heightened risk for violence, bullying, and harassment, and are already more prone to depression and engaging in self-harm, including suicide. Legislation of this sort making their way through state legislatures across the country exacerbate these risks by creating a hostile environment for transgender youth, all implying the same message, you're different, something is wrong with you, you need to change in order to fit here." I hope that's not the message that Marion County wants to send to its students, and I hope the board will instead work to create policies that make all students in the district feel safe and accepted in the schools. Thank you very much.
Clifford Lara, followed by Chrissy Vickers. Clifford Lara.
Clifford Lara, twelve thirteen Parade Avenue, Kissimmee, Florida. I want to thank you, Marion School Board, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I heard the young lady earlier today, and I've been listening to many of the dialogues that have been going on up to this point, the young lady who said that she was beat up and thrown in a dumpster. That greatly concerned me. I don't think that those things should be ignored. I think that when those type of things occur, those students who were involved in those things should be reprimanded, should be taken care of. But I don't agree that in the isolation of a small amount of people, and I'm concerned even for their well-being. I would only imagine what would happen to that young girl if she was to, or young boy, as she may believe she is, what would happen to her if she was to go into a boys' restroom? And I'm concerned about those health issues and those concerns that would come by. So I would ask you to uphold your ruling. I would also like to say that I believe you're standing at a pinnacle point in your county, not only just for this county, but throughout the nation. And you're standing in a place where many are supporting you across the nation. We've seen people come from all over this state, even to speak on both beheads. So I want to encourage you, and I want to strengthen you with my words, and to know that I support you fully, and I would go and support you anywhere else. So I ask also that you would consider the children, consider these children. Not only those who are transgender, but those who are not transgender, and not create a scenario that is worse than it is. So I would ask you to uphold your ruling. Thank you.
Chrissy Vickers, followed by Gary White. Chrissy Vickers is not here. Next name? Gary White.
I'm Gary White, ninety-two eighty Southwest ninety-sixth Court Road, three four four eight one. The lady stated some percentages while ago, I would like to let her know that in Chicago, a hundred percent of the black children are at fear because of the gun violence and the problems that are inherent with bad educational programs and keeping people stupid through government schools, I might add. I'm here to guard over our children and as guard over parents. The ultimate from attack by these very good people who I hurt for, I've listened to them tonight, I don't feel sorry for them, they don't want to be felt sorry for. I want to love them. I don't want to hurt them. But they are not the issue, and a lady mentioned that earlier. In socialist Marxist program, the issue is not the issue. This is a created attempt to destroy the family, the family unit. That is simply what it is. This attempt to have left to destroy the family is a place strongly in this place tonight. Common core, although some people think only standards is a curriculum, and I've studied it. Part of common core is giving the child, before any probably sexual things are happening, the ability to make the decision of whether or not they're going to play out their life as a boy or a girl. It says it, it states it in the Common Core book. The issue is not the issue. This is a destruction of the family. I pray, I hope these people, our people, our American friends who are transgender, come along and do good. But I almost want to end ending, say, has anybody in this room grown up not bullied? Thank you.
Mrs. Morley has returned. Put her at the end. Natalie Natalia Jimenez, followed by Reverend Martin.
Hi, my name is Natalia Jimenez, I live at forty fifty-six Northeast seventeenth Avenue, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven nine. I'd like to put aside all the issues of morality for a moment and look at the legal, financial, and public relations issues here. School gender inspection policies similar to this one have been found to violate Title IX, which, as you know, prohibits sex discrimination in public schools. In fact, the United States Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, which is responsible for enforcing Title IX, has explicitly said that, and I quote, "All students, including transgender students, are protected from sex-based discrimination under Title IX. Passing this policy would put us at risk for losing federal funds due to not complying with Title IX." Though there's not yet a federal law explicitly protecting the rights of transgender students, on a state-by-state basis, this is where we are heading. These policies are being declared illegal. This proposed policy is directly based on the Gloucester County School Board's policy that was just overturned one week ago exactly by the U.S. Court of Appeals. It also opens up the school board to expensive litigation. Our schools need every penny and don't need their budget being diverted to cover a lawsuit. In two thousand and twelve, this school board passed a similarly discriminatory policy against LGBT, that is lesbian, gay, straight, bisexual, and transgender students. Oh, I missed, sorry. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender students banning the creation of a GSA, a Gay Straight Alliance, at Vanguard High School. The policy was stricken, but only after the ACLU brought a lawsuit. And as I'm sure you've seen in your emails, the ACLU already sent an email today warning that this policy is legal. We don't want to be spending money that could be used on education on lawyers, and we definitely don't want to lose the federal funding that helps keeps our schools afloat. We don't want the sort of negative media attention that could come with this as well. We want media attention for the wonderful things our students are doing in our schools, their accomplishments, awards, and achievements. But we can't keep the amazing music teacher who led Shady Hill to winning the first stop on Radio Disney's Music in Art Tourist School without federal funding. So we need to put the good of our students first. Thank you.
Reverend Martin, followed by Mallory Sazmansky.
Yes, my name is Pastor Jack Martin, one three four eight nine Drysdale Street, Spring Hill, Florida. I have been a pastor for thirty-four years, a counselor for thirty-four years. Up until the end of March, I was a candidate for the Congress in this district here in Ocala. The reason I was running was this very reason, we have an ideology taking place in our nation today that is trying to sweep away every bit of common sense that we have. If we think for one moment that passing, that allowing the kids to switch bathrooms is going to stop bullying, we don't understand anything, it's going to increase bullying. It overlooks all of the children who are going to be damaged by having somebody from another gender walk into the room, you violate every belief every family has in that, right? I've listened to fear tactics by many of the speakers here, and all the talk of Title IX and suits. I'll tell you what, you let a few of these kids start getting raped in class, in these bathrooms, and you'll see lawsuits, you start seeing parents who get greedy because of lawsuits, and they start stepping up and claiming their children have been damaged by having this situation take place, you're going to see the problems have, you made the right decision. When you stand, it won't be before, you know, a government, you're going to stand one day before God. And the only decision you're going to have to answer right then and there is, Lord, did we kowtow to the pressure, or did we do what we knew in our heart was right? I think you already know that you did in your heart what was right, and I pray that you don't change your mind. I thank you, we are all praying for you. Just one last thing, people always come up with, oh, you're homophobic. I have a son that's homosexual, I love him as much as my other five children, I would step in front of a bullet for him. That's a nonsensical argument, it's about what's right and wrong, and it's about what's doing to protect everybody, not just a select number. If they, if you want to have a singular bathroom for them, that's fine. But to say that they go in each other's bathrooms, you're violating the right of every other child in that school. I thank you, God bless you.
Mallory Sazmansky, followed by Cheryl Olin.
My name is Mallory Sazmansky, and I live at five seven two eight Southeast one fifty-six Terrace, Hawthorne, Florida, three two six four zero. I'm here today, like many of you, because I wish to secure the safety of our children. I want to see children thrive in our public school systems, and I believe adults have the responsibility to protect, respect, and dignify all students. I'm an educator, and I know that safety and security are tantamount to a productive learning environment. This is especially true for our younger, more vulnerable schoolchildren. Today's resolution attempts to thwart the effort to protect some of our most vulnerable young people. Transgender and gender nonconforming children are often made unsafe by school officials and their peers. Some of these stats you've heard already, but they bear repeating. A recent study showed that seventy-five to eighty percent of trans kids felt unsafe at school. This feeling of vulnerability correlates to lower GPAs, high rates of absence, a declining enthusiasm about going to college. By attacking trans kids, this resolution reverses the purpose of public education. It discourages kids from even coming to school for fear of harassment or bullying. Seventy-eight percent of trans or gender nonconforming kids report being harassed about their gender while in school. Thirty-five percent were physically assaulted at school because of their gender. School is already an unsafe place for trans kids, and this bill intends not only to justify the harassment, but to expand it. More than half of transgender and gender nonconforming people who are harassed in school have attempted suicide, more than half. That means the suicide attempt rate for trans kids is twenty-five times the national average. We, as adults, have a responsibility to set an example of respect and inclusion for children. I wholeheartedly support efforts to protect children, but I oppose this resolution because it does the opposite. It targets an already vulnerable population of kids who just want to get through school and go on to live happy lives. For anyone truly interested in being an advocate for the children of Marion County, I encourage you to educate yourselves. For anyone whose Christian faith is trying to convince them to support this bill on biblical grounds, I encourage you to vote no. Thank you.
Cheryl Olin, followed by Patricia Schaefer.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Olin, my address is one oh six oh five Southeast one hundred forty-second Avenue Road in Aklewaha. I have lived in Marion County for about fifteen years, I am a former Marion County teacher. I'm here tonight to ask you to please vote against this resolution. Schools should be a place of safety for all children. Schools should be a place of inclusion for all children. Schools should be a place for acceptance for all children. What you are proposing, this resolution, would take away that safety and inclusion and acceptance for some very vulnerable children. Transgender adolescents especially have enough humiliation and distress without it being reinforced by the administrators of their schools. This is not a religious matter, it's not a privacy matter, it's a matter of fairness and compassion and inclusion. So I'm asking you tonight to please vote no on this resolution. Thank you.
Patricia Schaefer, followed by Kenneth Baxley.
Patricia Schaefer, twenty fifteen Southwest Forty-third Place, Ocala, three four four seven one. Superintendent Toman, Chairman James, distinguished school board members, thank you for your service to our community and for openly addressing this topic. I am a former Vanguard High School parent, both of my children are graduates of Vanguard High, of the Vanguard High School IB program. Let me first, by starting and by saying, I am a Christ follower and I stand with God. I am here to appeal to your sensibilities regarding the transgender bathroom issue that the board is currently addressing. This is a highly sensitive topic with emotions high on both sides of the issue. In attempting to keep emotion out of the conversation, I would like to focus on facts. First, transgenderism reportedly affects less than one-half of one percent of the general population, approximately zero point three percent. Secondly, appropriate, safe, gender-neutral accommodations were made in this case by providing the student at the center of this controversy with a private bathroom. May I repeat, appropriate, safe, gender-neutral accommodations were made for this student. It is my understanding that the student refused the accommodations. That being said, the powers that be caved to the one over the concerns of the many. This is not how a representative republic is supposed to work. Who addresses the concerns and the uncomfortable feelings of all the other students, faculty, and staff who must now potentially share a bathroom with the opposite sex? You've had the strong arm and threats of the vocal minority thrown at you already this evening. I would encourage you to seriously consider the liability concerns should someone with nefarious intentions intend to do harm to a student of the opposite gender because the school board caved, allowing carte blanche and a free-for-all with regard to bathroom and locker room usage. Please, use common sense and maintain bathroom and locker room usage according to birth gender. Thank you.
Kenneth Baxley, followed by Cassandra Capobianco.
Hello, my name's Kenneth Baxley, I'm pleased to meet you and to be here tonight. I reside at thirty-two eighteen Southwest Thirty-fourth Avenue Circle, Ocala, Florida. And I'd just like to address the board and say that, you know, I've watched you work, I've watched you labor, I've appreciated the work that you've done, the intentions, you know, I don't always agree with, but that's beside the point. What I would like to address here tonight, though, is that really this is not about bathrooms, and I think everybody here knows that. It is about family values, it is about Christian values. I serve the God of the Bible, this nation was founded on the God of the Bible. And when we want to make something religious, it seems like the Bible gets left out or taken out of context at best. And so, I'm just wanting to urge you to do what I believe is in your heart, to do what's right. The children are at stake, you know, we're not looking to see somebody come and undermine our values, to undermine what we stand for. what we stand for, and undermine the things that we hold dear. I would not want to have to be responsible for somebody going in and abusing a child and then having to face that parent and tell them that because of a policy that was made that it allowed that person to usurp it. Thank you very much.
Cassandra Capobianco, followed by Jane Morley.
Good evening. I'm Cassandra Capobianco. I'm the, my address, work address is 14260 West Newberry Road, Newberry, Florida, 32669. But my home address is McEnopi. I have two children. They could go to Marion County schools, especially given the most recent law. I'm the Director of Florida Institutional Legal Services, which is a project of Florida Legal Services, a civil legal aid. We provide legal aid to people who are economically in need around the state. I've been listening, I know lawyers often talk a lot more than we listen. I've been listening to what a lot of people have said, and one of the things that sticks out to me most dramatically today is that Liberty Council stood here and offered to bankroll litigation defending the school board on this issue. There, as Equality Florida said, there's a legal freight train coming probably on either side. We will happily be part of the side that challenges this ordinance. The Constitution protects the minority. It does not only protect the majority, you all know that. In the Bill of Rights, the founders of this nation, that's why we have the Bill of Rights, is to protect that three percent, that other, that's the statistic others have cited. There have been no incidents, not one incident, of violence caused by a transgender student against another student. The Liberty Council, we need to watch who we make friends with, right? They're a designated hate group, a designated hate group. Whether you agree or not, it is a designated hate group. They constantly bankroll defenses against, of government agencies who enact or promote anti-LGBT ordinances and laws, and it's all over the, I mean, it's on their own website. So it's really not in controversy. Thank you.
Jane Morley.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I come, I'm a mother. Oh, 5700 Northwest 2nd Street, Ocala, Florida, 34482. I come from a very conservative family, and I'm a mother and a grandmother. I know that many issues are at stake here, and I pray that you all will make the right decision and what's in the best interest for the majority of our students. Many people will have issues, and we are opening ourselves for issues where somebody that can disguise themselves as a transgender can go into a bathroom and harm the majority of the children. We don't want that to happen. So I pray that you all make the right decision and vote to support the resolution. Thank you.
I have two additional people to speak, but they wish to speak off the air, so that will be at the end of the meeting.
I'm sorry.
Oh, changed your mind? Okay. Claire Lancaster.
Hey, Ms., your name is Lancaster?
Hello, my name is Claire Lancaster. My address is P.O. Box 786, McEnopi, Florida, 32667. I am a parent. I'm also an abuse survivor of abuse. I'm familiar with how abuse works. I'm familiar with how sexual assault works, and I'm also familiar that there is no evidence to suggest that this policy will in fact protect students against any sexual assault. At the last board meeting, you said that you were offended by what these students wanted for their rights. While other people are offended as well, I am offended that there is an emergency meeting for this. I'm offended that when over twenty-six hundred students were absent from Westport, there was no emergency meeting. There was a real threat. There was a real threat that time and no emergency meeting. I'm offended that parents have been coming to you about bullying and there's been no emergency meeting. There is a real threat with bullying and there's no emergency meeting. I'm offended that there's cyberbullying, there's cyber problems, no emergency meetings. I'm offended also that there are actual sexual assaults happening on campus, on the school buses, and there's no emergency meetings. Why is there an emergency meeting on this? We need to talk about this more. You need to talk to both sides, not just one side. This needs to be thought out, and all children need to be considered, and the safety of all, and what the real threats are, and what the facts are. So please, take more time to consider this. Thank you.
We have anybody else?
Chrissy Vickers was outside and did not hear her name called, so Chrissy Vickers. Is that the last one?
The last one on the air.
Hello, my name is Chrissy Vickers, 2905 Southwest 15th Street, Ocala, Florida. I just had something real, real quick. I've been just observing everything. I just, I just wanted to say real quickly, it's just really, really burdening just to see that because, well, that we've become so sensitive to the transgender community and, and that we've forgotten about the rights of everyone else and what we stand for, and whether it's Christ or whatever, it's just that we've become so sensitive to the, to the LGBT community and the transgenders. Because I, I, actually, I love everybody, don't have an issue with that, but we have forgotten about the rights of everyone. And that's all I wanted to say, is that we need to take everyone's rights into consideration. And if we can change, try and change a law just because of this, there, there are so many other things that we've been trying to change laws for, and nothing's been done. So it's that we need to be sensitive if, and my thing is, if we're going to be sensitive to this, we got to be sensitive to everything else. Thank you.
The only person, I have one left that says they would like to speak off the air.
Okay, at this point, board, because I know we have a shade session coming after this, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
At this point, I would like to give the board a five-minute break, so, so y'all can, I'll call a recess at? At seven forty-eight. Board, y'all can take, take a break.
There's no script for me.
No, there's no script for it.
Just talking.
It'll be a long day.
I reconvened the Marion County School Board. At eight oh five?
Eight oh one.
Eight oh one, I'm sorry. At this time, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items C- eleven, C thirteen, C thirty-six, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda. May I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. King. All in favor signify by saying aye. In accordance with the consensus obtained at the April twenty first two thousand sixteen administrative briefing and work session and the consent with, and consent consistent with the Florida law, I declare good cause for resolutions one six dash zero zero one to be placed on an emergency item on this agenda for the protection of the health and safety and welfare of all Marion County public school students. At this time, I will ask Kevin Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Production Coordinator, please read for the record the resolution one six dash zero zero one in its entirely entirety.
Sorry, Mr. James, give me just a minute, I was not prepared for that.
I've got a hard copy. By the way, Kevin is Superman.
Nope, just doing my job. This resolution reads, whereas Marion County Public Schools acknowledges and supports the right of all students to attend schools that are safe, protective, free from violence and harassment, appropriate, and that ensure their right to privacy; whereas the term sex is defined as a person's biological sex, either female or male, as determined at birth; whereas there is a longstanding history in this nation and Florida public schools of restricting access to single-sex restrooms, locker rooms, and other single-sex facilities on the basis of biological sex; whereas students have a reasonable expectation of privacy in Marion County Public Schools and all Marion County Public Schools' single-sex facilities based on the federal and state constitutions and other laws; whereas Marion County Public School students are minors in the majority who are entitled to education and care in a safe and protective environment; whereas male and female users of Marion County Public Schools' single-sex facilities reasonably expect not to be exposed to persons of the opposite sex while using those facilities; whereas persons who are transgender, gender non-conforming, gender fluid, and/or gender independent are not a protected class under federal or state law or Marion County Public School policies; whereas neither federal nor state law prohibit Marion County Public Schools from restricting single-sex facilities to use by persons of a designated sex; whereas some students may question their gender identities and assert they are transgender, gender non-conforming, gender fluid, and/or gender independent; whereas Marion County Public Schools encourages all students with gender identity issues to seek support, advice, and guidance from their parents, staff, professionals, and other trusted adults; and whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida now desires to provide current guidance on this important, complex, and legally unsettled issue to the Superintendent of Schools, school principals, staff, students, and parents, particularly regarding the interpretation of applicable School Board policies. Now be it therefore resolved that single-sex Marion County Public School facilities designated for girls and women, including but not limited to restrooms and locker rooms, shall be restricted to persons who are biological females; single-sex Marion County Public Schools' facilities designated for boys and men, including but not limited to restrooms and locker rooms, shall be restricted to persons who are biological males; students wishing to use alternative Marion County Public School facilities shall always be offered comparable facilities as required by law, and students dissatisfied or having other concerns with the school district's offer of comparable facilities may avail themselves of the grievance procedures specifically established in current Marion County Public School policies. This resolution adopted this evening, the day of, you fill in the date there, at a regular meeting of the School Board of Marion County, and would be signed by the Board Chair, Mr. Bobby James, and Superintendent of Schools, Mr. George Tomlin.
May I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion that we vote on Resolution sixteen dash zero zero one.
I second it.
And we have a second. As now we have discussion, and we'll start with you, Ms. Stacy, with discussion.
I believe we've discussed it a lot. The Superintendent had asked us for guidance, and now we, and he had a little difficulty getting with us in guidance. We gave him guidance Thursday, and his office Thursday, last Tuesday, but tonight we're giving the Superintendent written guidance with clear resolution reflecting our anti-discrimination policy that does not allow discrimination based upon sex exactly as Title IX states. We are simply making a public proclamation tonight confirming our existing policy. We are in complete compliance with Title IX as we have been for decades, thanks to our current anti-discrimination policy. We cannot help that the Department of Education, federal Department of Education, is now working under an illegal, unadvertised rule. We believe this interpretation of Title IX has been promulgated illegally and without due process by unelected bureaucrats. It is a violation of the constitutional right to the personal privacy of our students, poses a risk to the safety of our students, and additionally will disrupt the educational process and the orderly operation of our schools. In fact, the real hoot to this entire thing is the federal Department of Education does not even have a constitutional right to even exist. So, I would like to, I've passed something out to my fellow School Board members, and instead of reading the entire thing, it's talking about why I believe this rule is totally illegal because it has not been properly advertised by the federal Department of Education Civil Rights Division. I've searched everywhere, there is absolutely no advertising on this rule, but I have passed this out. I would like for it to be a part of the record so that I don't have to read the entire thing, but the School Board members have had a chance to read this, so it does need to be a part of this record. Or I can read the entire thing, but it would take a while.
Ms. Ely?
I believe we've, we've heard from a lot of parents, and I appreciate the forty-six people who did speak tonight. It's, I know it was hard for some of you to come up and speak, but it's good to hear from our public, and we wanted to hear your, your opinions, your feelings, either way. I believe that we spoke about this last week at great length, and I thought about something. It's that if transgenders can go into either the boy or girl bathroom, depending on their choice for the day, boys, all boys, great, boys that aren't transgenders can go just to the boys' bathroom, girls can go just to the girls' bathroom. So isn't that reverse discrimination? That's just rhetorical question, but I just thought that that was interesting. Also, the safety issue is the biggest, and although nothing has happened yet, we're gonna see some things happening, folks, we will. And if, depending on the situation, we can't have teachers monitoring the bathrooms, that's not gonna be possible. But if we know the rules, like we have rules in, you know, Marion County, and kids know what they can and can't do, then, then they should be following the rules. And if a transgender student feels uncomfortable with the gender-neutral bathroom that's been offered to him or her, then, like, you know, like the resolution says, take it up with, you know, the Marion County School Board policy. I'm definitely in favor of keeping the boys in the boys' bathroom, girls in the girls' bathroom.
I think that the School Board has, we have the right, the right, right respect and distinctly, distinctly to, to a lot, to a lot of people, to all of our children. When we come to school, we're here for our students. I don't think that, that any of us, when we go, when we're talking about school, we're talking about our children for, for going to, to school, not about the other, what we're talking about now. I think that we, we could, come, I just wanna say, we came right here, we came right here, and we did an alternate. We use an alternate for people wanting to use another facility. I think that sometimes we talk and we think things so big, and we think we're making so big, big about things, when I know, but I know that everyone hears, we're here for every child. That's what we're here for, the children, that's what we all think about school is about. We're not thinking about, most of us, some of the things we need to think about, you know, going to the, to, that when we go to a teach, that we're talking about the bathroom, that we, that we have so much that people come together when we say, okay. Well, then we realize, we realize that what we can do then is say, okay, we do have the women, and we do have men. So we said we can, and we, if you look, we're saying we're an alternate place. Because I think that we come together with our children, I think that we should think about that. You know, we don't think about what you feel because it's your child, that they're, they're poor, you're not. You might be twelve, I mean, if you're over twenty, and you wanna fine with us about it, it feels like, oh wait, don't, you have to look, these are our children. And by the time they go other, over when they're twenty, not, not one teacher in here will sit here and have the same, same thoughts about it, you know? And I believe that, I think, you all know, I think this really hard, and I wanted to be able to treat this. I, I, I say, well, this, I wanted to be able to talk, not just because I wanted to pray that it's all about God for, for everybody, because I know there's every child that I, in this far, that they're here, every child is, may not be God. We know that, but we know when it comes for, when you go to school, we're here about that for what year, when you go to, when you go to your, when you go to your tag, to you go to the school, to meet to the school place. We're here for that, you know? So I, I'm really, you know, I'm supporting this because I trust the children. It's what we do for them is more important than what everybody that wants to find here, or somebody will say this about it or whatever. It's about the children, tomorrow for the children, you know? So that's why we came, when we came, when we came to this, I think we came because we, we thought about children to, like, again, the girls, the boys, and then we said alternate, we thought about it. We didn't come for anything but that, because so important, it's so important, I think. I, I say some, you know, I said, well, sometimes we need to just stand up and look for our children, and yes, they're gonna be our mothers, of course they're gonna be father, good job. If you're a father, father guardian, you couldn't do it the same way that everybody thinks, still, you're doing a good through, through. I, I, when I go to some teachers around, one of the things I, I see is some of them, they, there's so many things, I mean, some of you have their thoughts, there's so many that comes through them, but if you look at all our teachers that come through, they're here because they know some, there's some applause, that come in, that's, you have to cry, you have to say, they really put a lot, okay, it really come a gum thing for our children, our teachers. They're not look, they, when they come in, if you have to think, when they come in, they're not about the things, I think we're here for, to make what you come for, to be an, a, a tated, tated, that's what it's about. It's really about that. And, and yes, I'm gonna say it again, I want them to know one more thing, for me, for God. If you don't believe because what I feel, I'm not gonna hurt you. That's not, that, then why would I work about your God then? Think that, we're here for our children, that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Ms. King?
Okay, good. With my other board members, we have had a lot of discussion. We didn't come up here tonight and make this decision. Believe me, we have put a lot of thought, and we've done a lot of research also, to form and come up with our opinions. And I agree with my other board members, I am also in favor of this resolution as I believe it's important for us to respect and supply every one of our students with privacy and protection and safety of using the restroom. We're not up here, we're not up here trying to show, what's the word, correct word, I'm, uh, we're not up here trying to show favoritism or discriminate, discriminate, that's the word I'm looking for. Discriminate against anyone up here, but we do wanna ensure student safety and privacy for the entire student body. And with this resolution, in there it states that transgender students will be accommodated with a gender-neutral restroom, if they're not comfortable attending or using the male or female bathroom that they were born to use. And if they choose, and this gender-neutral bathroom is provided and can be used by any student in the school, it's not just strictly for transgender students, it's for any student. Again, I don't feel that this is discrimination, it's allowing every student privacy and safety. And I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay, I'm passing the gavel to Ms. King, and, and I have to really just say I understand what everyone is saying. Rest assured, and I hope you all will understand what I'm gonna say. We are at the end of the school terms, and we have many mandates that's required to fulfill these last five weeks of school. Just as the nation is, is on stage and slowly working through the issues, we need to ensure that any resolution that we, that we render will be, will be passed with equality, legitimacy, feasibility, and impartiality to all of our students. This is only, this can only be done in the development, developing a decisive resolution that will be, that can be carried into the future and, and should not be hurried. We must ensure that any resolution we make does not violate Title IX, the Title IX Act, a law banning sexual discrimination in school. As a school district receiving title funds, we honor very strict and precise governing rules. The recent ruling from the US Court of, a Court of Appeals, the Fourth Circuit in Virginia, marked the first time a federal court has determined that Title IX protects the right of transgender students to use sex segregated facility that's consistent with their gender identity. This rules opened the door for future rulings that could be costly to the school districts, or districts around the country who do not comply. We cannot let our motion dictate our action. I'm asking the School Board to table this issue until a date, and I will give you some dates. And the reason I'm asking you all to do this is I have worked real hard with the Florida School Boards Association, and if you look at those dates, on June eighth and June ninth, we are having in Tampa this very thing that we are discussing today, June eighth and June ninth. And this will give us an opportunity to look at what is occurring in state, in, in the state and throughout the country. And when I ask you to do that, I know that four of our members go to And when I ask you to do that, I know that four of our members go to, go down to there, and when usually when we come back, we usually will say that this is a very, a very good workshop, a very good meeting. And what I'm asking this board to do is not change your view, I don't want you to change your view. All I want us to do is to, is to go down, look at what has been done, and come back with this. What I propose to do, and what I'm asking for us to do, is that we schedule a June twenty-third workshop after you have reviewed the material that we've got from, um, from what we've got from, uh, what we get in, uh, down in, uh, in Tampa. When we look at what we are talking about in reference to establishing a plan, because this information is good, there is not an emergency at this point. There has been only one incident at Vanguard. And for us at this point to, to, to not take our time and look at the information that we, that we are, will be getting. I listed some things that I would like for us to do in this period of time. The Florida School Board, uh, Association, a summer conference is June eighth through the tenth, that's another month. And I would like for our attorney to talk to us about the consequences of passing a resolution prior to receiving, uh, information, or, and when I say, just look at the consequences of us and what will occur if we do not, uh, comply with these wishes. I would, I'd like the superintendent, um, to work to the available task force to look at how we can, uh, possibly retrofit our bathroom and they, and take in consideration the amount of money that we will be spending if we have to defend a lawsuit, if we can use that money to retrofit our bathrooms. I would like to also have our attorney to look at a way in which we can make this thing palatable with, uh, working with the OCR, working with the National School Board Association and their attorneys to make this work. I have set two dates that I feel would work for us. Once we come back from, uh, from Tampa and have this information and looked at some of the schools, some of the school district that had the same type meeting that we, I had tonight, and tabled it, and tabled their decision till after they came down and looked at what is, uh, going on. I will say this, Sarasota County, Brevard County, they had an opportunity to do this, and I'm asking this board not to change it. Board, I'm telling you from, as a, as, as one of your colleagues, we have been very diligently going to these meetings, I can count you, one, two, three, four, that go down and sit there in these meetings and go over and listen to our colleagues, and I'm urging you to, let's table this until we go down, we look at it, and look at it, and talk with our colleagues, and come back and then schedule a work session and bring these things together, and we can in turn have something in place for the beginning of our school year. I do not want to write, uh, sign a resolution tonight and expect us to be enforcing it tomorrow simply because we are rushing, and I'm asking this board to just think as, just think about what I am saying. I'm not, I'm not saying anything about what all, all the people are, are saying out there. What I am saying is about what we need to do to make sure that we've covered all our bases, and it's not gonna kill us. It's not gonna kill us to where.
Can I say something? We're gonna try, but I do think that if, if, if the state of, this, the state, the state of Florida, of Florida, Florida, they, we, we do, let me stop for one second, for one second. Okay, for, for Florida, Florida, we, we don't have, we don't have the say, the say now, right now for that. And if you look, the Florida state, the Florida, there is no law yet for it, right? So mean, if, if the children are just, other, same, other thing, if you're over twenty year gays, right, one time?
Over twenty-one years.
For, for twenty, a twenty young person, what you're saying, and why I have a problem just to say it in this way is that if you're, if you're saying that the little, that the children, these peeps, the babies, little baked children, they don't have the law, they're not the law. But if you're making them to be the one who have the law, but you're not having, am I right?
I understand you, it's okay.
Am I right though? Yeah.
Let, let me, let.
I think it's just kind of.
It's okay, Angie.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I am not challenging anything that you all are saying. All I'm saying to you is that we are part of the Florida School Boards Association, and they are putting, and if you read it, they're putting on a transgender, uh, program that they're, that, that is talking about all the legalities of this. All I am saying to the board, board, there is not an emergency here. It is not an emergency here where we have to take action tonight. We can go down there and get information that other boards have, have worked their way through, through the state of Florida, and we can make sure that we are writing, are writing something that, that will, can uphold time or could be more in line with what we need to do, and it will be more in line with some of these school districts that have experienced this and have tabled.
Mrs. King.
They've, they've, they've. Have tabled their actions until they have had this meeting and gathered this information. I'm not asking you to change your mind. All I'm asking you to do is go down there and come back on the twenty-first with a, with an opportunity to do that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Tomlin.
Thank you, board, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. As you are aware, my personal legal counsel has reviewed the proposed resolution and, and has expressed several legal concerns. The substantive concerns have already been outlined to you by other attorneys, including Mr. Lake. Guidance from the Office of Civil Rights and now a federal court has indicated that this resolution may not withstand legal challenge. I do fear this will open the school board up to needless and costly litigation and have a negative impact on our students. If you as a board intend to move forward with a vote, then there are procedural requirements not currently being followed that need to be addressed. If you examine the list of the two hundred and thirty or so resolutions passed by this board since nineteen eighty-eight, you will not find one which concerns enacting a campus-wide policy or rule like this. The resolution being voted on is in fact not a resolution, but a rule which the board is directing me to implement on all campuses. School Board Policy, Your School Board Policy two point two-three and the Administrative Procedure Act set forth strict requirements on how a rule or policy is to be enacted by the board. For non-emergency rules, the board is required to provide the public proper written notice which is advertised for twenty-eight days prior to the vote. The notice must include a concise explanation of the proposed rule's purpose and effect, the estimate of economic impact to all affected by the rule, and the specific legal authority for the board's action. Any person who claims to be substantially affected by the rule is then permitted to file a written request with the board, seeking a determination by an administrative law judge as to the validity of the proposed action. That decision can be appealed by either party to the Fifth District Court of Appeal. For emergency rules, which is how you are proceeding tonight, the twenty-eight day waiting period can be waived, but the board must publish in writing prior to its action the specific facts and reasons for finding an immediate danger to the public health, safety, or welfare, and its reasons for concluding that the emergency vote is fair under the circumstances. An emergency rule which is adopted cannot be effective for a period longer than ninety days from the date of adoption, and it is not renewable unless the board adopts a permanent rule or policy through the normal procedures set forth by our policy and statute. If the board is intent on passing this resolution, I would urge you to follow the procedural requirements we have put in place for enacting a rule as set forth in Board Policy two point two-three and the Administrative Procedure Act in order to protect the district from a legal challenge of the process. And last but not least, I continue to believe that as educators, we should continue to try to educate ourselves about this issue and not act hastily based on fear or political expediency. School Board Policy two point two-seven allows the chair of the board to appoint special committees whenever deemed necessary. This issue lends itself well to committee study and dialogue before taking any official action. A committee of persons with opposing views willing to sit down for meaningful conversation as well as experts in child psychology or law enforcement would help inform and educate all of us before any permanent rule or policy or resolution on this topic is passed. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Stacy.
Point of order, this agenda is not, doesn't talk anything about discussion, discussing the legality of this. Our attorney responded to each one of us, and that could be included in the board, um, come, the board, this, this resolution hearing or whatever, we've all seen it. Our board attorney responded to all of those things, Mr. Tomlin, this is not a rule. This is clearly guidance and a proclamation to the community as to what our policy has been, and obviously, it has withstood the test of time, it has been, we have not had any violations with, um, Title Nine in two or three decades, I mean, there's just not ever been one, so therefore, I'd like to call the question, please.
I have, I have a motion on the, go ahead.
I'd like to call the question. Yes, please.
Point of order, I have, Ms. Lake, I had, I asked for, I made a motion that we tabled this issue.
I think a sub-motion has to be ruled on first, doesn't it?
Gotta get a second first, can't even talk about it.
If it's been second.
But I, I can't talk to my attorney, right? Can I talk to my attorney?
A motion has to have a second before discussion ensues.
Right.
Do you wanna, do you wanna restate your motion?
Okay, I'm asking that we table this, uh, table this until we come back from the Central Florida Coalition, uh, until we get, until we come back from our, our workshop down in, uh, Tampa. I'm asking that we, we do give ourselves an opportunity to, to go down and look at what is being done, because there is not an emergency where we have to do something and direct our people to do something tomorrow. All I'm asking is for us to table that there.
Okay, is there a second? No, motion dies.
Okay, I'd like to call the question, please. So chairman, I'd like to call the question that we go ahead and we vote on the resolution number sixteen dash zero zero one. This is a proclamation stating and giving guidance to our current policy that is in effect, and I'm sure that Mr. Tomlin knows it's in effect because when my students were at Forest High School, um, there was a child that was suspended while my kids were there for using the wrong bathroom, so the policy is the same as it was then, Mr. Tomlin, when you suspend, when your administration suspended a student at Forest High School that I recall for using the wrong bathroom, and it is still in place, nothing has changed. And I call the question. Um, okay, Ms. King, would you call the question and we can vote?
Okay, I called a question.
We'll call the question.
I called a question.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye. Opposing view? Mr. Chimes, do you wanna vote?
Did, did they vote?
Yes, we voted. We're just trying to wait for it to come up.
All in favor signify by saying all opposed, say nay. I'm just putting that out there so we can hear it.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
The motion passed for one.
Mr. James, I know that at the, uh, school board conference, we can find out more. We can get more information on what else we need to do.
Okay, may I have a motion to, may I have a motion to approve the following donations? Okay, two thousand five hundred dollars to Anthony Elementary School from the business partner Kennedy Terry Enterprise via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from the Rotary Club of Bellevue. One thousand five hundred dollars to Community Tech Adult Education for Star Shield Service LLC. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Donna, uh, to Dr. N H Jones School, Elementary School from Duke Energy Foundation. Five thousand thirty-three dollars to Fort McCord School from, uh, Cactus Jack, uh, Two, Incor, Incorporated. Two thousand dollars for Hammett Bourne, uh, Junior Elementary School from IBM Corporation. One thousand five hundred dollars to Hammett L. Bourne Junior Elementary School from their business partner, Inline Autodonous via the Public Education Foundation. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Madison Street Elementary School from their business partner, Regions Bank via the Public Education Foundation. Five thousand seven hundred and five dollars, uh, ten dollars to Marion County Public School Grants and Federal Programs from Loews Charitable and Education Foundation. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Shady, uh, Shady Hill Elementary School from Give a Note Foundation. Five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from the Board of County Commission. May I have a motion in second?
So moved.
It was ruled by Ms. King, I mean, Ms. Ely. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Ms. Borington. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed five, uh, zero. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, May, uh, five, two thousand sixteen, at nine AM. The purpose of this work session is to receive a presentation from the Marion United for Public Education regarding local test data requested to, uh, uh, data requested to rename Van, uh, Vanguard High School Basketball Court, uh, as well as review the differentiated accounting and student discipline as it is related to weapons and firearms. The student, uh, the student hearings scheduled for April twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen have been canceled, and the recommend for expulsion will appear on up code, school, coming board agenda. Before we get to that, before we get to, uh, our comments, I missed something in, in terms of that. Ms. Ely, did you get the numbers on how much we got?
Of course I did.
Let us have that, and then I'll go somewhere else.
Thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ten cents, and I, I wanna commend the Board of County Commissioners for giving five thousand dollars to Vanguard High, but wonder if they have more than that, they might wanna make some donations to other schools. I'm not sure what that was for.
Okay, that was for, they usually help with, uh, with the basketball tournament over there and bring people into Marion County. Ms. Ely, why you had the floor, would you go ahead and thank the people for it?
Sure, that's a lot of money, and it's a lot of businesses and people in Marion County who are showing that, how much they care about our schools and, um, keep them going. I like the businesses that aren't even business partners that are making donations, and, um, I'm just very, very proud to be a member of Marion County School Board and being involved in the schools, it's great. Thank you.
Okay, board members, Ms. Stacy, you had the floor.
Oh, I would just like to, is this?
Comments.
Comments. I would just like to, um, to say thank you. We have three ladies that came together at a time when they were the only ones that could do this, to move our country forward. could do this, to move our country forward, so that we can move forward and challenge the overreaching federal government. I believe our district will be a landmark case, and I believe that if it hadn't been for the women on this board, that I so appreciate, this would not have happened. And I remember Rosa Parks, another woman, and she fought for civil rights, because she fought for people who were born with skin that was not the same color as mine. She fought for those rights, because she was born that way. She couldn't just say, I want to be white and receive the, and receive extra favoritism over the, over, just because that's what she wanted. We had to go through civil rights legislation, and we had to settle that. We had to settle. She was black when she was born, and when she was born, our Constitution gave her rights because of, she had equal rights at birth to everyone else. And she was a wonderful woman, and we will, what we're doing doesn't touch what she did, but I'm proud to be a woman standing for the Constitution of the United States. I took my oath of office that I would support the Constitution of the United States, and I believe that is what I have done tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Ely?
I, I feel good about what, what we have done together as a, as a board. We still have a lot of, a lot of things, this is just the beginning of the end, but I, I believe we've done the right thing, and I believe that we need to keep our bathrooms and our locker rooms safe for all kids, and that's why we wanted to enact this right now, not, you know, next fall. But I think we did the right thing. The other, I know we did the right thing. The other thing I wanted to remind everybody, May third, next Tuesday, is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and parents, write a note to your children's teachers or do something nice to show them how much you care for, for everything they've done for your children. And just be supportive of your teachers, because they work many, many hours beyond the school day. So thank you, teachers, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Ms. King?
I also wanna say, I realize what we did today took a lot of courage, and I, I still feel confident that we've done our research, we did our due diligence to make the appropriate decision where it is best for all of our students, every one of them. And now I'm going to go to a lighter note and mention that today I went to, today is Agriculture Literacy Day, and so I had the opportunity to go out to Ocala Springs, and I read to the second and fourth graders, and we learned a lot about vegetables, and it was just, it was lighthearted and fun, but they were, they liked learning about them, like the bell peppers and the traffic light pepper. It was just fun. So that, and then also, again, I wanna, someone called, and you may have got it, May fifth is the National Prayer Day, and we're invited to read the proclamation between twelve and one with other leaders, so we wanted to make sure that everyone is aware.
Where would that be?
On the square.
Okay.
That'll be on the square. And then again, as always, I wanna remind our students that attendance matters and just finish out this year strong. Thank you.
Ms. Lake?
No comments tonight, thanks.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman James. As I give you each two weeks during this assessment season, I've asked Mrs. Weldon to provide me an assessment update and how things are going here. Her response to me was the administration of computer-based FSA continues through this week and next week for grades four through ten for English Language Arts, Reading, and grades five through eight in Math. These tests must be concluded by May sixth. AIRS testing platform, that's the computers, has been performing reliably so far. FCAT Science is a paper-based test for students in grades five and eight, is being administered this week. Grade eight, grade eight took both sessions of FCAT Science today, while students in grade five took session one today, will take session two tomorrow. You can see how complicated this gets. The testing window for the state end-of-course exams opened yesterday, but most of our secondary schools are working to complete the FSA English Language Arts and Reading and FSA Math before starting the EOCs. The testing windows for EOCs will close on May thirteenth or May twentieth, depending on the test. Mrs. King has already made the comment that attendance matters. Many, all of our schools are taking this very, very seriously, and especially during the testing season. We even received a telephone call from Wyamina Park Elementary that during six days in a row, when they were doing testing, every student that was expected to be there had perfect attendance. So that was pretty interesting thing. The state, for your information, you may have seen news articles about this, has finally released the school recognition dollars. School plans have already been approved for the disbursement of those funds, following the guidelines provided by the state. It's about one point eight million dollars to twenty-two different schools here in Marion County. Very proud of that the Washington Post has recognized the rigor and challenges of our seven public high schools here, all offer challenging curriculum, and that's something that we certainly propose to do and will continue to do. We are again having a second annual recruiting fair, and this, this Friday evening. We'd like to thank the Colleges of Central Florida for hosting that very successful event for us and providing the facility. Just for your information, I will be hosting the third annual Superintendent's Leadership Conference for Assistant Principals and Principals in the last of July of this summer. And then our own technology department, something that's very popular for our teachers, is hosting a day of technology on July twenty-seventh, and I believe that event's gonna be at Vanguard High School. And then finally, for you, we do, are having a district retirement celebration for the number of instructional, administrative, and non-instructional persons who are retiring. You will receive an invitation, it should be in your mailboxes if you haven't already gotten it. It is Tuesday, May the third, from four-thirty to seven, at the Ocala Hilton. Again, you will be receiving an invitation, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that. Thank you, Chairman James, that's all I have, sir.
Board, we have spoken, and I just want all of you to understand, I was not trying to get you to change your mind about anything. What I was asking you to do was take advantage of the opportunity we would have. We chose not to do that, and this is the cross we bear. Okay, now, and when I say this, I've heard Rosa Parks name and all of that, but guys, I have always asked, all of us, to think things do. And that's one of the things I, I felt, I feel very strongly, that we had, that we got backed in the corner here, because I heard things that I, I thought I would never hear. Someone said, well, it was a ladies' club. And guys, y'all have been knowing me a long time, and it, it should not have been a ladies' club, and that, that's really, is disheartening to me, because I, I have never, I have never did anything based on any of that type of stuff. I did this, I did what I did because I wanted you all to really just examine it and make sure that we are going down the road in which we can live for. I will back out of it, and I will say, we ain't, we out there, the train is coming. So this is where I am. Okay, let's move on. Before addressing the express expulsion policy, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received the alternative placements list for students through April eighth, two thousand sixteen. Ms. Flo Catter, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's behalf?
Not on the child, we just have the one that wanted to speak off air.
May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of J.D. sixteen dash twelve and J.D. sixteen dash thirty-three with, with an educational service through the first semester of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
It was ruled by Ms. Ely?
Second.
And second by Mrs. King. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's not coming up.
The motion passed five, zero. This completes the televised portion of the meeting.